And remind everybody that we are the video conference, of course. So I'll ask the clerk to please call everyone present.
Ms. Escobedo?
Here.
Ms. Ackerman?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
The consent agenda reads Town Accountant Warren's February 18th, 2021. Minutes to approve, January 4th, 2021, January 11th, 2021. And the gift acceptance, thank you very much, from the Concord Carolina Youth Baseball Donation, a backstop padding worth approximately $2,500 for the right outfield. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Because we do have a busy agenda, I won't do a recitation of the written report that you had in the packet, other than to highlight just two items. The first is on vaccines, we talk about it every week. As you know, the state, as you may know, the state last week made a pretty significant policy change in how vaccines are distributed. Basically continuing to centralize at mass vaccination sites, and I know they're opening a few more of those. I was just in a conversation a short while ago with area town managers about potentially putting, trying to put together a regional vaccination site. The state does have criteria that you have to meet to be approved as a regional site. And so we are continuing the dialogue and may include a letter of intent to, you know, offer what the communities can do collectively as a region for, to help towards the vaccination efforts, with the understanding that it would be, the state is really looking for different regions to consolidate and really, I think, looking to enhance the mass vaccination sites that they already have established and control versus decentralizing them to the municipalities. But nevertheless, we're going to try everything we possibly can to continue to get ours, to get Concord's residents vaccinated and support the work of our neighboring communities, so we can get everyone as vaccinated as quickly as possible and hopefully bring it into the pandemic. So I guess more to come on that. The next thing is the water system security. There was a story a couple of weeks ago about an attempted hack of a Florida water system, basically modifying the controls of the chemicals that are used to treat drinking water. And there was just, there was some information I included in there on improvements that, excuse me, the town is proactively, has been proactively making to improve our security, and then a nationally issued information paper on that particular hack. Other than that, I will just open it for questions.
Jane?
Yeah, thank you, Linda. Stephen, on the vaccine point, I, at the last Board of Health meeting and through some other conversations, I understood that we still haven't received any of the originally planned 100 doses per week. I believe that's still the case, correct?
We did, we did get an initial allocation of 100 doses, and then I think we had two, one, maybe two weeks where we did not, but then I think we did just get approved for another 100 doses, and so we are going to do another micro clinic.
Okay. I hadn't heard that.
But the state said effective March 1st, they will no longer be giving it to communities, other than the 20 at-risk communities and then their mass vaccination sites. But I think we did get one. Now, do I think we're going to get another 100 before March 1st? It's probably not likely.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that this had never been Concord's, lack of effort on Concord's part. This was simply a process that didn't happen.
Yep. Thank you, Jane. Terry?
Yeah, I'm excited to see that you're thinking about that letter of intent. Looking on the map of Massachusetts, there does seem to be kind of a gap in this area. People have to go pretty far. So it would be, I know we had a lot of success with the first responders, and it would be really good to have a regional site. So thanks for doing that. I hope it works out.
Yeah, and I should have mentioned that we are being, that a, the same group of health directors, of public health officials, are having the same conversation. And so the managers are being informed by that collaboration, and so whatever we submit to the state is going to be based on an approach supported by the public health directors of those same communities.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'm going to move on to the chair's remarks. First, I want to comment that the Select Board is looking for a community representative for the Hanscom Fields Advisory Commission, and this commission works, represents the area towns, working with the MBTA. There are some particular important issues on their agenda right now, and so we would very much like to have a Concord citizen represented on that committee. They're dealing with some environmental impact issues, as well as some increasing noise issues from flights and other things that citizens are concerned about. So if you're interested in serving on that, you can go to the volunteer tab on the front page of the town's website. And while you're there, if there are other committees that also interest you or people that you know, please encourage people to sign up for them. So thank you for that. On a more serious note, I want to mention that it was recently brought to my attention that some neo-Nazi signs were put up in town, and while, as has been pointed out by our other Select Board members, while it's our constitutional right to express our opinions, we do not tolerate hate. And we want to thank the police chief and his team for responding immediately to take them down, to follow up with necessary investigation, follow up, as well as remain vigilant going forward to prevent anything like this happening again. So I'm sorry to have to report that, but that's where we are. All right. Moving on to the next item is the Regional Emergency Community Center proposal that's on the table, and Stephen, were you going to kick this off?
I was, yeah.
Thank you.
Before I do, I'm pleased to have representatives from the town of Acton. Tom Manjirati, John Manjirati is here, along with Police Chief Burrows and Fire Chief Hart. And we also have Chief O'Connor and Chief Judge of the town of Concord. And I do see Joan Corey, who represents our dispatchers, is here as well. So I'm going to share my screen and just show, oh, and I should have, our consultant, Tom Kennedy, is here as well, who I think can help with some of the questions and answers. I'm going to share just some brief, a brief slide presentation that Tom prepared as, it basically, you all had the executive summary in the packet, this is basically a PowerPoint distillation of that. And I'm going to invite Manager John Manjirati to, you know, jump in here when he sees fit. So, as you know, we did, actually, the town of Acton received some funds to retain the Edward J. Collins Center for Public Management, really at UMass Boston, to conduct a feasibility study of establishing a regional emergency communication center. That's RECC, so if you hear me say the word REC, that's short for the Regional Dispatch Center. Those terms are used interchangeably. And so this is the final report, a summary of the final report, and this right now is an effort between the towns of Acton and the town of Concord. So the team here, as I mentioned, Tom Manager, John Manjirati, Police Chief Rich Burrows, Fire Chief Robert Hart, myself, our Chief O'Connor, Chief Judge, and then Tom Kennedy. And the study process included site visits, interviews with key personnel, an assessment of the facility, the dispatch center that we're looking at, how's the REC is in the Acton Police Station? And then a technology assessment of both dispatch departments, as well as a staffing and financial analysis. And these are Tom's conclusions, but I'm just going to go through them quickly. Acton and Concord are well-suited to establish a REC. We are similar population, call volume and culture. We are adjacent, and we have a high level of expectation in providing our dispatch services, and I think we do a good job, both towns do an excellent job, meeting those high expectations. The dispatch center in Acton, at the public safety facility, has the floor space to accommodate eight dispatch positions and one supervisor. That would be more than enough to accommodate the two communities. And then, so is it feasible to regionalize, based on the call volumes you can see here, the calls for service? They're about the same, and the total calls are about 70,000, split evenly between the two towns. You look at the 911 calls, they're also very evenly matched, and then the population's a little higher in Acton, but still very, very similar communities. And these are some of the outcomes of the interviews, just some of the highlights, the willingness of the public safety leaders, which is a critical element of this, to look at regionalization. One of the big things is the additional dispatch personnel to deal with surge events. A large public safety event, a fire, perhaps a manhunt or something like that, when calls really spike, you have additional dispatch capacity for those surge events in one town or the other. The technological equipment upgrades, that we'll talk about state funding for in a minute. Standardized protocols, which helps with, you know, operations that may take place across town borders. Economies of scale and combined resources and cost savings. And then, you know, increased professionalism and increased expectations. Again, I don't, I don't, I think that that's something that a regional dispatch can, can take as something that's already at a very high level and take it even higher, but that bullet isn't to indicate that we believe we do not have a high level of professionalism. I just think that a regional dispatch has the ability to build even more capacity. And then it would be an independent department. So on the finances, the state has been incentivizing regional dispatch centers for a number of years. By way of background and a previous life, I was, I think I mentioned this before, I was deeply involved in the establishment of Regional Dispatch Center in Western Mass, and so I am deeply familiar with the process and the issues and the analysis that's required to kind of sort through a lot of the things that are unknowns at this stage of the process. And, you know, I think that where we are with the feasibility study is right where we should be. So the state uses funding that it receives from cell phone surcharges, not, you know, general fund state revenue, to fund these. The big thing is, they do development grants, you know, the big functions there that they want, that they want to increase are radio interoperability, they can fund the redesigns, they can make upgrades to computer-assisted dispatch and fire alarm systems, and then personnel and transition awards, this is to help build something. Right now, towns of Concord, the town of Concord and the town of Acton individually receive support incentive funding from the state, so there would already be a stream of funding that would go into the regional dispatch. One of the things that is a state policy that is of significance for me, anyway, is capital improvements won't be funded by the state if they're not for a regional dispatch. So if you have an expensive piece of equipment, whether it's a tower, or you need to upgrade four or five dispatch centers, and it's a capital item, the state won't incentivize that if you're not a part of a regional dispatch. And so that's a big deal, both now and into the future. So this is a projection of savings. I don't want to get too hung up on the numbers here, because, I'll be honest, I don't think money is the primary reason to do this. I think the capital, in terms of being able to make capital investments with state incentives, that's something that's worth, you know, worth pursuing, and I think the operational considerations are important. I do think that regional dispatch centers do save the member communities money, as laid out here on the slide, but I don't want to get caught up on, you know, the actual dollar amounts here, because this is a feasibility study, but the early projections would be for savings in non-recurring capital. For Concord, it'd be about 180,000, for Acton, it'd be 400,000. And then there'd be a recurring operational cost savings. So the total savings would be, you know, 780,000 annually, or at least overall for the town of Acton, and then about 600,000 for the town of Concord. Again, these are preliminary numbers, but I think the order of magnitude that they present paint a favorable picture, but again, it's, it's really, it's less about the money than it is about the operational considerations. So a couple of recommendations, we have to choose, if we were going to pursue this, we would have to choose a governance structure, and there's a host community, which would mean, in this case, Acton would be the host, and all the employees would be town of Acton employees, and Concord would be, we would, we would basically by mutual agreement govern the dispatch center, or create an independent dispatch district. And the consensus of the service chiefs and John and I is that a district is really the appropriate model. It's comprised of all the same people, but it has its own independent governance structure, and so it basically would be, it would give equal standing to both communities, and it would be something that would be separate from the towns. We also think we should be developing an outreach program to educate the communities, both communities, on what regional dispatch is and what it isn't. I think the bottom line of it is, if we were in a regional dispatch and someone picked up the phone to either dial 911 or call the business line, they really wouldn't know that they were talking to somebody in the town of Acton, because, you know, the goal is to have the same dispatchers with the same level of knowledge of each community. And I can tell you that most other parts of the country have large dispatch centers. You know, I think some, I think it's for some crazy stat, like California has five dispatch centers for the entire state. And so this is something that is really very commonplace, except in Massachusetts. And so this is something that I think, like I said, the user on the other end of the phone really isn't going to know the difference, whether it's in Acton or on Walden Street. And then a plan to address the administrative and security needs for Concord Police and Fire, develop uniform operational call-taking dispatching procedures. Again, I think we're pretty closely aligned, so I don't think either of these would be giant, you know, gaps that would need to be filled. A transition training plan, and then really make sure that we are getting the input from the dispatchers and public safety personnel, to make sure that whatever is developed for what we would hope to be a dispatch district starts off on day one with the best practices of both departments. These are the benefits of a REC. The top five benefits are standardized use of the same dispatch protocols, resource allocation. Again, if you have a day-to-day, it's fine for the normal life calls, but you have one or two big events going on at the same time, it can really strain an individual dispatch department. The cost-saving and financial support, you know, enhanced mutual aid, especially on incident command, and more efficient response to the public when dispatching emergency responses. Because if, like, again, if, if, if one town is really relatively, if there aren't many calls coming in from one town, because it's kind of a normal day, and then you have in another community, a lot of calls, you get a car accident plus a possible structure fire, that can overwhelm a single dispatch department, and this really helps make that call process a lot more efficient. And then the next steps. So we're doing this here tonight, later on this evening, we'll be presenting this information to the town of Acton Select Board. And if, you know, if the Concord Select Board and the Acton Select Board, you know, if there's consensus that this seems like something worth pursuing, then we would start to review a governance agreement, again, based on a recommendation of a district. We would prepare a letter of attestation that would come from myself and Manager Manjirati, and to the state, basically saying that we are committing to pursue the next phase of grant funding for the development grant to continue this, this study process. And that, it's kind of a tight turnaround, that grant is due on the 4th, and our consultant, Tom Kennedy, would help us prepare that. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen. I know I went through that very quickly, but now I'd like to, you know, kind of open up for conversation and ask John if he has anything to add, or the chiefs.
Joe, I'll just jump in. Good evening or good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you all. This is a project that I think we've, we've taken a very inclusive approach in how we've looked at this study. Tom Kennedy has talked to dozens of people in both communities to try to understand from an employee standpoint what things would make sense and wouldn't make sense, and we're pretty pleased with the work that he's done here to identify that it is, in fact, feasible. And so we're here tonight, the chiefs and I from Acton are here tonight just to show our support to Concord Select Board, that this is something that we're in lockstep agreement with our Concord counterparts. And we'll be talking to the board later tonight, as, as mentioned.
So Joe, or Chief O'Connor, or Chief Judge, if you wanted to put the board know your views on it?
Chief, you want to go first?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'll just say that I think bullet one on the slide titled "Interviews" is my primary, is my primary reason for being interested in supporting this, and that deals with the surge capacity. Both, both organizations have policies in place that allow for the callback of dispatchers when an incident, you know, is growing, or it's, you know, just large scale. And that's, that's great, but it doesn't help us with the first 10 to 15 minutes, which is when they're most needed. So I think having the extra, the extra people on hand right at the outset, for me, is the, is the largest driver behind this. I look at it, and I, you know, and one of the things that I, that I do in my job is staying current, is reading NIOSH reports, which are the reports that are done for injury, firefighter injuries and fatalities. And universally, in a NIOSH report, one of the, one of the top, top, or top reasons typically listed as number four, I think is the average on them, is communication failures, communication breakdowns, missed communications, things along those lines, that I think that the more capacity we have at the outset of an incident, when it's developing and, and things are really moving fast, it just makes the job safer for everybody in the street.
So to build on what Chief Judge was saying, something, a large incident, or even some smaller incidents, and we've had some, some real-life things, and we work very well with, with Acton, but it really increases the, in the first moments of chaos of a, of an incident, some clarity when people can communicate. We've had some manhunts, and we've had some other large incidents that if two towns were sitting right next to each other, we'd be able to mobilize a little, a little quicker. You know, I've worked before coming to Concord, in a number of joint operation centers, and I can tell you, when people are working together and sharing information, you get a lot more efficiency in managing very serious events. And, you know, working with Chief Burrows and getting to know Chief Hart and Town Manager Acton, you know, their mindset of service delivery is right in line with the way that we service our, our community, and we've got a very good working relationship so far.
Stephen, are you ready for comments from the Select Board?
I didn't, I would invite Chief Burrows and Chief Hart to offer their views, if the board has been given that as well from Acton.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. I certainly would echo Chief Judge's sentiments. I've known Chief Judge for a lot of years, and, you know, can't think of a better chief in the area to work with. He's a top-notch, and, you know, safety, and safety for his personnel is always number one to Tom, and I share his sentiment. So I agree with this joint venture. Acton and Concord are very, very similar in the way they operate, and I'm looking forward to working with them.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Rich Burrows, Chief of Police in Acton, and I echo their comments as well. Concord happens to be our largest border. I've worked with Chief O'Connor for a couple of years now, and we're on quite a few different committees together as well, Domestic Violence Services Network, C4RJ. So we've done a lot of work together, and I think this is a great opportunity to really improve communications in both communities.
Thank you.
And like I said, our consultant, Tom Kennedy, is here, so I guess I'm going to open it for questions.
Jane?
Thank you, and thanks, Stephen, and to our consultant, and to all of the chiefs, I'll just say chiefs in general here, as well as Town Manager Manjirati. So I, I have a couple of questions, and I'm, I'm saying these as much because I think that this is, these are all questions that are probably going to come to us as a Select Board and come to the Town Manager's Office. But, you know, I guess we start with the choice of Acton, again, has nothing to do with, with towns or that, but given the fact that, for instance, the hot, the local hospital, the closest hospital is in Concord, the choice of Acton as the, as the space. And I'm thinking about how this would be viewed at town, at town meeting, and I think we need to do a, I think we need to hear, and probably Concord will need to hear, what this, this regional dispatch center does uniquely for Concord. I understand there are a lot of shared benefits, and I'm not, I don't have a quibble there, but I think we need to, for Concord's sake, understand what is uniquely valuable to Concord about this, about the regional dispatch center, and how the governance structure is going to share those responsibilities. And then I also, just a general question of how do we, what's the thinking behind a call that comes into Acton about something in Concord, when, when Acton isn't going to have the same familiarity with Concord's area, the roads, the spaces, you know, the locational points of it? Some of this is just ignorance. I don't, I don't know how that, how that dispatch works, and whether or not it going into, to Acton functionally doesn't really affect the way it would be dispatched. And then to, you know, playing that forward, what happens in an event like the tornado, which was very, very focused on Concord? How does that, how does that function if the dispatch comes out of Acton? And then one other point being, what if a tornado hit both, which is not impossible? We've been seeing these microbursts, and in our changing climate and changing weather patterns, that's not an unforeseeable event. So I'm thinking about events that have caused a major surge in, in concern and dispatch, but weren't necessarily a criminal event, or a, something that would, that might, you know, necessitate joint law enforcement work.
So I'll, I'll defer to Chief O'Connor on the operations side of it, but I think, like I said, I think the big thing is, Jane, the, the end user would really not notice any difference in terms of when they pick up the phone and it gets answered from a Concord dispatcher, because a call center could be anywhere. It doesn't necessarily have to be in a police station. That's something that is an idea that I think sometimes takes some getting used to, but it has been proven, even in Massachusetts, as regional dispatches have gotten developed, that they're, not all of them have been perfect, for sure, but there have been a number of examples that have started off and have done very well. And like I said, I think the, you know, in terms of the operational stuff, one of the reasons why they have been, why there are more of these, and as they get established, some of them end up growing, is because of those operational considerations. And I'll turn it over to Joe for that.
If I could just add one nuance to that, I'm also thinking specifically about the, the dispatch issues that might be based on an event that's, you know, Acton has Eversource, and we have CMLP. Those are very different response capabilities, and you would dispatch very differently. And so I'm, I'm trying to figure out, you know, again, these are the, how does Concord have some unique pieces to it that we need to think through?
So I just said that the tornado, real, real-life event, and that happened in the middle of the night, where we would have benefited by the REC, because there would have been more, more staff working the time, the time that that, that occurred. You know, managing any type of big incident is, you know, we use the incident command system that is shared across, you know, you know, fire, police, and other disciplines as well. Procedures, we have procedures in place, emergency procedures right now, to notify CMLP, and I'm sure Acton has the same to notify their utilities. So they would have those SOPs available in, in the regional dispatch to address any of those. Familiarity with, with the, with the community. You know, quite frankly, you, we, most of our dispatchers that we, that we hire are not You know, quite frankly, you, we, most of our dispatchers that we, that we hire are not from, from Concord, they're from surrounding communities, some a distance away. And we have orientation that we do with the, they'll go over to the fire department, they'll, they'll drive around town, get familiarized. I know in our conversations, Acton has a very similar procedure that they do over there as well. So, you know, we would have to ensure that people were, were familiar. You know, technology today is also advanced. You can look at things quite quickly, you know, both towns have good GIS systems, maps they can pull up. And, and, you know, Google, Google Maps for seeing a street and so forth to be able to look, look, look at things. There's a number of different ways to overcome those, those challenges. And it would be incumbent upon us as the management team to ensure that the dispatchers had that information, that training to succeed in that role.
Yeah, so to answer your question about what would be unique for Concord residents, is it okay if it would also uniquely benefit Acton residents? And that is, we're on the kind of, we're in the middle of a kind of a wave of next gen dispatch technology. Recently, the state deployed text, you know, basically emergency texts. And I think they're, they're working on ways for people can like kind of live stream videos from their phone to dispatch. And so these are all things that are happening. And if you're in a regional center, the technological upgrades you're going to need to accommodate that next gen of call taking and dispatching will be, will be underwritten in part by the state versus being the sole responsibility for Concord taxpayers. And that's, that, that's a, like I said, that's not an insignificant item.
Other select board questions or comments? So there was mentioned in the report, this would have to become an independent unit. Can some, some more be said about that?
Yeah, I think, so the governance structure, like I said, this is where the host community versus the district. And so the district would be created. And it would be basically an independent government entity. When I say independent, it would be independent in terms of its creation, but it would be overseen by a board of directors that would most likely be the town managers from the towns and an operations committee that is the service chiefs of the towns. And so even though it's an independent district, it's overseen by the same people, the same community leaders and public safety leaders, which is the model that I helped create in Western Mass. And so that's what I said, it's an independent thing. It will be, it will be a unit in, within this district.
So do they become their own bargaining unit with a, as a separate bargaining?
Well, I mean, I think our, the dispatchers in both towns are part of collective bargaining units and they, they happen to be a part of the same local. And that's why Joan Corry from Teamsters is here. And that's kind of a good thing, to be honest with you, because it's, we, we know that going into it, it would be the same partner that each town has currently.
Jane.
First of all, I want to acknowledge both Terry and Susan have had their hands up.
Sorry.
Because, because I got a quick one in, I will just say, the only question I have to Stephen on the governance structure then is, who, who do they report to? I mean, Concord is very actively engaged in, as we all know, in, in committee attendance and reporting structures and access to that process. Linda outlined a, the collective bargaining piece, but the question is then, who reviews the dispatch center?
Well, it depends on how we structure it, but generally, the operations committee manages the day to day, which is what the members of the, which, again, the members of the operations committee are the same people who manage the dispatch center operations day to day today. And then the overall oversight of the operations and personnel would be managed by the town managers who do that again today. So it really, it really doesn't represent a shift in authorities when you're in a district as opposed to a host community. It's just as, it just gives both towns, you know, I say equal footing, but it just makes it that it's more of a shared partnership as opposed to a host community agreement.
Okay, Terry.
Yes, so I definitely agree with Stephen that Massachusetts is very far behind in this area and the rest of the country is way ahead of us. And it's time for us to get in the right century and become more efficient and have a better response, faster response, better technology, the whole thing. And there's a lot of benefits. I do have a number of questions. First of all, when, right now, when people dial 911 from a cell phone in Concord, does it have to go through some state system and then finally go back to Concord? And, and will this rec solve that problem? That's my first question.
It used to be that way, but it now comes directly to, to our dispatch.
Oh, good. All right. Great. And my second question is, it looked like, I agree that cost savings is not the only factor or even the most important factor, but it did look like we had quite a significant operational annual cost savings of 400 and something thousand. Where does that savings come from? Because we still have to hire staff. Do we have fewer staff or less, do we have 400,000 less than utilities for a building? Or where's the savings coming from?
Incentives from the state that we get as, by virtue of being a part of a regional dispatch center that we don't presently get. Operational incentives, in addition to, in addition to capital, operational incentives. Tom can talk a little bit more about how all that, or Tom Kennedy can talk a little more on how all that works specifically, but that's the, that's the operating incentives.
Okay, I didn't realize that. So every year, the state would be sending us money for this operationally? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. How, how it would work in a district is, the district would have a budget. And it would have a budget for personnel and, you know, wages, benefits, expenses, you know, all of those things. And then there would be the offset from the state. And then the remainder would be divided between the communities on some formula, although because the communities are so closely aligned, it would be close to even. And then the town would pay an assessment every year. So, you know, this is kind of a side thing, but, you know, the town's OPEB obligation would be somewhat reduced because these would now be district employees instead of town employees. So there are little kind of factors like that. But, you know, the goal, one of the things that our goal of, of this next phase is really figuring out a way to make sure that for our dispatchers, who we value greatly, the working, I'd say working conditions, but the, you know, their wages, benefits, compensation, you know, the, the, the structures they have today are going to be the same or, you know, potentially better in a district. We don't, we want to make sure that there's, that, that, that our, that Concord's dispatchers and Acton's dispatchers are incentivized to go work for the district if, if this gets established.
Okay, that's a great segue from my last two questions. I'm thinking of possible obstacles or problems if we were to implement this. And one that I'm thinking about is the rotary. I know that one of the goals is, is to get a really fast response time, for example, during a tornado or whatever. But, you know, getting through that rotary is, is so impossible, even for an emergency vehicle. And, you know, how, how are we going to improve response time if we have to go through there? So that's sort of one obstacle. And another one is, is probably the main obstacle that I, that is the problem in Massachusetts, why we're so far behind. Sometimes the dispatchers don't want to go with this model. So I see here that we have a lot of support from all the chiefs and that we did get a document from the dispatchers a few minutes before this meeting started. I haven't read it yet. But I really think we need to hear from the actual workers. I'm glad Joan is here, but not just the union, but the actual workers. What do they think? Because if they're against it, it's not going to work well. We need to see what, you know, whether they're convinced that it's a good thing. So those are my last two questions.
So I, I mean, the police and fire still respond from, from the stations that we have today. That doesn't change. So the rotary is no more of an impediment than it is as we sit here right now.
Well, but the chiefs were saying there'd be additional staff during a surge. You'd have more.
Additional dispatch staff.
Okay, I thought it was both. Okay, okay. Just additional dispatch.
Additional dispatch staff. And, and I think, you know, I, you know, one of the things that we've, that we have done from the very beginning was, you know, make sure we're communicating with our colleagues, our dispatchers. So I, I do think that, you know, I know Joan, you wanted to speak on their behalf. I, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, I haven't seen the letter. But I will tell you that I, after having discussions with Joan and some of our dispatchers and some of Acton's dispatchers, I know there's a lot of uncertainty. And that's what this next phase of study is all about, is ironing out a lot of those uncertain things and, and determining, you know, finding the answers for a lot of the questions that I'm guessing are posed in that letter.
So this next phase for this March 4th is just more studies? It doesn't commit us that we have to go forward if we, is that correct?
I, I think, I, I think the, the letter of attestation, you know, this is a highly competitive program. There are a number of these regional dispatch initiatives underway. And this has been the same, I, I've been, this is my 60 year working on regional dispatch. And so I can tell you that it's a highly competitive program and they try and bring dispatch, regional dispatch centers along instead of giving like the tip project money where you get all of the money at one time for your, your road project, but you wait in line for a number of years. They do parcel it out so towns, so regional dispatch efforts can, can continue ongoing. The letter of attestation is basically that we're, we are, it is our intent to move forward towards, towards regional dispatch center. Ultimately, you're not really obligated until you sign a district agreement. But it is a, it's not a tire kick. It's, it's a, it's a commitment, it's a commitment to work to resolve these issues and to get to the goal of a regional dispatch center.
Susan or Matt, did you have questions? Susan?
Yes. First, I want to thank all of the chiefs and the town managers for collaborating on this because I think that's, it's been thought about in the past, but hasn't gotten to this point in terms of people being on the same page. But I want to echo what Terry said and I, I guess my main concern is what the dispatchers, what their attitude is about it. And I had a question about, it said that the, there's a capacity for eight dispatchers in the space that exists in Acton. And I, I was just curious, how many does each town have on call per shift?
We have two on per shift.
Okay.
I think, and I don't, John, if you.
Tom, did you want to talk about some of the analysis?
Yeah, I, I think she was asking, what do we have on shift currently? And actually, and then maybe Tom Kennedy could run through that. We did a staffing analysis, but again, it, it's pretty high level. But John, how many do you have on per shift? Do you have two? Yeah, so I think, I think we have the similar, similar staffing currently.
Okay, thank you. And also, I, yeah, I agree that the cost savings is not insignificant. But you're saying it's mostly money that you would get from the state, not necessarily cost savings for combining the two town services?
There would be some efficiency in operations, I, I believe, some operational efficiencies. But the, the incentive that you, and I want to split it. Again, this is critically, and I know, like I said, this is, you have to just, you know, bear with me, it's critically important to separate the capital from the operation.
Right.
Capital improvements are, you know, the ongoing operational savings are a big deal. But my philosophical view is because of the operational benefits outlined by all the chiefs, even if it costs us the same as our dispatch budget currently, we're still getting more for that money. Although I do think we will save some operating cost. It's the capital expenses that are really the ones that are significant to me, which, which we would definitely save money on as a part of a rec that we would not be able to get as an, as an independent dispatch center. So, or not, as, as the Town of Concord's dispatch center.
And the only other comment I had was about the governance and how you decide to divide up the, the shared costs. And having sat through a lot of regional high school comments about, you know, the way that is done and should it be different? I think it's, just care, just be careful of lay it out in a way that seems, that, that has support right from the get go. I know it's, there's not a huge amount of difference between the populations or the calls or, but just be careful with that.
Yeah, I, I hear you on that, Susan. You know, when we, and I hate to keep hardening back to my experience in Western Mass, but I was deeply, I was the chair of the board of directors that, that established a regional dispatch center. So I'm just unusually familiar with this process and, and went to, really went to bottom on all of these issues that were, that we're trying to, we're going to be figuring out in the next phase. You know, thorough analysis of host versus district, you know, staffing models. I mean, I, I just went in a different location, but the process is very similar. And I can tell you that the two communities that are in that west, that are in Westcom are very, are Long Meadow and the city of Chicopee. And they're very different. But using data and some other, you know, data and call volume and population volume and a few other considerations, we were able to develop a formula that was equitable for both towns, even though the partnership is very asymmetrical. And so I think, and as I've talked to, you know, the folks out there to kind of say, how's it going, you know, a year and a half later? I talked to one of their lead dispatchers and, you know, what are the big hiccups you've had? The biggest issue is really the growing pains associated with the differences between the two communities. Whereas that really isn't, doesn't really exist here because of the similarities. And I think that that's one of the things that makes this, I think, so, so favorable.
Thank you.
Matt?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, Concord and Acton have a long history of cooperation, going back at least to Isaac Davis. Hasn't always worked out so well for Acton. But, you know, more recently, I guess, the name of the town of Acton has shown up more often, ironically, in litigation. And I guess when you put together a regional center, the question is how stable or, or, you know, how much can we count upon like a long-term partnership? I think that's the biggest risk looking forward. And, and I, I don't know how to address it. But, you know, when towns are suing each other on other issues, you know, it, it can affect that goodwill and, and ability to work together. And I, I just, you know, the stability of, of a funding mechanism and all. So I guess that's one, this is just a comment. I don't know how anyone could directly address it.
I can, if you'd let me.
Sure.
The district agreement that we would develop in this next phase will address specifically how that partnership is, is managed and how that partnership would end if one community decided they didn't want to do it anymore. One of the benefits of the district is that it can't just be a, a host community can't just say, we're done with you, get out of our dispatch center. The district makes it so it's a, it's a bilateral decision-making process for dissolving the district. And like I said, I think it's, there are ways to do that. Usually in, in the Westcom district agreement, there's just a notification timeline that you have to make if you don't, either don't want to be a part of it or if you want to kick a community out, that make it so it would not have too detrimental of an impact on another town's operations. The other thing I'll say about the partnership is, you know, communities have agreements and disagreements and we, we do our best to compartmentalize those things. And as, as the chiefs noted, Concord and Acton, especially in a public safety level, work together every single day. And so this is really a natural extension of those partnerships.
Yeah, okay. Then the next is kind of an open-ended question for our chiefs, which is, you know, when you read the executive summary, it, it's obvious that the economies of scale, the financial benefits provided by the state are all, you know, very positive. But I, I'm just trying to think, what am I not thinking of that could be a negative for us? You know, things, because it all sounds so rosy from the report's point of view. But, you know, I, I guess I'm not an expert in this. I'm not seeing, we talked a little bit about the, the staff and their motivation. Anything else on your minds as you kind of let go of this as a capacity that you, you have in town versus a regional one?
So, yeah, see, I don't, I don't think of it as letting go of a capacity. I think of it as really kind of. of it as, um, really, um, kind of a force multiplier by having, having more people in one room, ability, with the ability to deal with, with the issue at hand. Um, to me, it's not really an issue of where the, where the center physically is. I think Stevens made the point that, that it, it doesn't really matter where it is, and I agree with that. Um, if you look at, um, if you look at prior to the, some of the most recent cell phone technology, where the 911 calls do now come into the local centers, um, I believe prior to that, if you dialed 911 from anywhere in the state, it was answered in Framingham by the state police. And you didn't know where they were. Um, so it, it's, I, I don't think that we're, I don't think that we're losing anything. And I think particularly with the governance model that's being suggested, it is, it is making everybody equal partners in this. The only thing, the only thing that is, um, changing for Concord, I guess, um, I believe is, I believe is a, an enhanced service, um, but the physical location, which is really not, I just don't see that as a big deal. I've seen this since 1983, when I started working for the town. I've seen this topic discussed on at least four other occasions. And it, it always, it always died on the vine at the point where they talked about where it was going to physically be. But that was, that was long before the technology we have today and, uh, long before fiber optics and all of the things that can, that can move the information that's necessary around. And, um, frankly, in the past, that the, the chiefs could not agree on, on where it was going to be. They couldn't, you know, there was, there was, it, it always seemed to be that there were control issues over it. And frankly, the physical location is just irrelevant to me.
Okay. I, I did have one final question, which was just, uh, on the, kind of more of the upside of this, is there any idea of further expanding the regionalization to include other communities such as, let's say, Littleton? Um, or, uh, on the other hand, uh, having other kinds of regionalization that are not specifically dispatch, but other services?
So, I, I, I mean, I have discussions about regionalization of one thing or another, you know, regularly. Like, I mentioned in my town manager's report, you know, I, we had eight, eight town managers talking about vaccination, you know, regionalizing vaccination. So my first thought is, how can we partner with someone else to accomplish a goal, you know, no matter what it is? Uh, in the context of, of, uh, regional dispatch, um, our, our goal, as we sit here tonight, is to create a, a regional dispatch center for the towns of Acton and Concord and build it and get it to work really, really well. If, in the future, that's something that other towns would like to be a part of, then that's something that we could consider. But our goal is to just do it right for the two towns. And, um, and, and that's, that's where we are.
So I would ask additionally, um, is the money from the state competitive? You know, when you talk about being incentivized on an annual basis, is that competitive and does it need to be matched?
Uh, it is, it is highly competitive. I, I don't know, Tom, what the match requirement is. Uh, usually it's, it's met in kind.
Yeah. I mean, actually, um, this support incentive part of this is really built on a, a percentage of, um, you know, the, the regional centers of population and call volume. Um, and that's the annual. And, uh, you know, like, the number that was in the, um, in the report, it never goes below that. It can grow higher than that. And then, um, this, uh, the development grants is really, that's a one-time and, uh, to establish the center. And then it's also can be used in the future for, um, um, you know, for, uh, addressing old outdated equipment that, you know, that you, that the towns may have. So, um, and that's under the, the development grant center, uh, a development grant. So there is a, um, you know, this, you know, as, as Steven said, this, it's really an excellent opportunity. And some of the more significant money is really in the, uh, in the equipment, the capital, the capital costs, uh, for a community.
So, so if I understood you correctly, the development grant, did you say was a one-time grant?
It's a one-time to address a particular need. And in five years, you know, some of the equipment gets outdated or they start having some particular problems with it, then you can go back in and, and request additional money. Uh, oftentimes, uh, you know, a regional center, depending on, you know, the, the, um, the, the status of your existing radio systems or other, um, which you're not in that position. I mean, I mean, primarily like the equipment in Concord is, is pretty good equipment that's been invested in. There are some problems with some parts of it. Um, but it is, um, you know, there are some communities that the equipment really isn't, it has to be totally be replaced. In, in your case, it is not. But it's, um, but there is a substantial amount of money the state will use to invest in the development of the center and, uh, which will lead to, you know, enhanced equipment for the, uh, you know, for the firefighters and the police officers, uh, you know, on the road.
Okay, thank you.
Linda, I had one last question, and it's off of Matt's comment, your question and, and, and Mr. Kennedy's response. Um, and, um, since what I heard you say was that, you know, Concord's equipment is in fairly good shape right now. I don't know what Acton's is. And, and I would assume that there's a goal of enhancing these, I'm going to keep calling it equipment because I don't know the specifics of what it would be. Um, but I did hear, you know, fiber optics and a number of other comments made. And it made me think about some of the, um, some of the problems that we face in Concord uniquely right now with, um, our, our cell phone coverage. And I'm wondering how this, you know, how does this affect that? Because we know we have holes. Um, I don't know what Acton's coverage is, but clearly there's going to be a, um, there'll be some connection here. I don't know what it is about, you know, how, how each town's unique, um, challenges get tackled if this is now a regionally dispatched service.
Um, it, it really won't help any cell phone coverage. Um, you know, this, it gives you greater capability at the, uh, you know, at the center itself, as Chief Judge and Chief O'Connor have mentioned. Um, but it, um, you know, because the, um, the future of all the communication center is driven around, uh, enhanced technology. And it, um, it's, it can be a challenge for, what I've seen on some of the, the standalone, uh, centers, um, you know, for a, a, a single community, is to stay abreast of all of that technology. And, uh, what I've seen is that in the regional centers, they're, uh, they're a little more astute. They have somebody that generally is a, you know, has a, a greater capability of, you know, understanding where the technology is going. And so, um, you know, but that's really just, you know, my belief and what my observations have been.
If I can build on that to Jane's question, I, it's not, in terms of our cell phone issues and our pursuit of better cell phone coverage, that really isn't directly related. But if it was advantageous to the district to co-locate, um, you know, equipment on a cell tower that, that maybe we would develop, um, that would be, that would be a benefit. Um, a financial benefit. Now, I don't know if that's going to happen, but you don't get that opportunity without the regional dispatches, is, is I guess the, the point of that.
I guess the, the term technology just still hasn't been defined. So I don't know, I don't have a sense of what we're talking about. I understand that you, it would have a unique, you know, something that would attach to various cell phones. That makes sense. But since Concord Center, where our police and fire are, is one of our holes, it would seem to be an issue.
Yeah, the dispatch, the, the, the technology is really, um, the dispatching workstations, if you will. Um, it's radios, it's repeaters, it's phone systems. It's, it's, it's really the, it's really the spine of, of public safety communications.
So I'm going to ask the select board, um, if you're, what's your sense in terms of feeling comfortable enough to recommend going on to the next phase?
I, I would offer that, um, with the caveat that I assume it doesn't, it doesn't commit us to anything. And I say that because I don't think Concord itself knows enough about this. And I don't want, we don't, we don't, as a community, handle surprises very well. And this would be, it might actually, as has been described, have very little impact on anyone. But the, the fact of its, its, um, its occurrence outside the, the public process would tend to, uh, evoke a lot of concern. Um, so that's my...
Eric?
Uh, yes, um, I agree with Jane. Um, if we were obligated right now, that, that would be a, a problem. I don't think we're quite there yet. It would be good to continue to study it. I think one thing that I haven't had time to do is read the dispatch letter that we got about 20 minutes before the meeting. I think it would be very important, again, to hear from the dispatchers. And the reason I say that ties in with what Jane just said. I did work in a community where the dispatchers objected to it. And they, uh, talked to community members and convinced them that it would be bad for the community. And it, it just became a, you know, took on a life of its own in a negative way. And so we just want to go about it carefully so we don't get into that kind of a situation. Um, so I guess I would be ready to proceed, um, if we could hear some comfort from the dispatchers either now or, um, maybe at the next meeting.
So can, um, either of the Concord chiefs speak to conversations that have occurred to date with the dispatchers?
So we've had, I think, uh, three, three meetings, I think, Stephen. We've had, we've had discussions. Um, I, I think Chief Judge said it, uh, earlier, uh, there's certainly a lot of unknowns, uh, for, for them. And I think that, uh, certainly arises to, uh, give a number of concerns, uh, about the, about the process of, of the, of the unknown of, of change. Um, you know, they've been quite frank in, in some of the conversations that we've had. Um, but have, uh, a question I get from both, both, uh, Acton and Concord is that they are all professional, uh, and they, uh, do wish to be, uh, good partners with us, is what they've said. Um, but certainly the unknowns are a concern. And I, I don't have the letter that, uh, you have, so I can't reference that either.
Thank you. Is Chief Judge still with us? Uh, Chief Judge, did you have anything to add to that?
I, I'm just echoing what Chief O'Connor said. I think that, you know, in, in fairness, I think that, that the current dispatchers, um, who do a great job. I mean, there's no, no dispute about that. They have, they have concerns. They have, you know, there is uncertainty. And if I were to be walking in their shoes at this moment, I would have uncertainty also. So I think that, you know, my, my sense is that this next phase is to iron out those uncertainties.
Yes, Susan?
I didn't receive any letter about dispatch, so...
Neither did I.
Okay. Um, that's what I wanted to say. The, I guess I feel like if we can be reassured that this is not a, uh, a, a commitment that has no, uh, that we can't reverse, if we get information down the line that indicates that maybe it's not such a good idea, um, I would support continuing to explore it.
Well, I think they have to apply for the grant by March 4th.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, at the very latest, we'd have our next meeting, right? I mean, it would get, it'd be nice to get an opportunity to hear from the public. It would be nice to be able to see the report. I've not seen a link to the whole report. Um, and it would also be nice to hear from the dispatchers. So I, I think that, you know, if we could wait in next week, I think that right now, things look okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we do need to, I mean, is, there's a part of this that, I mean, part of this is, is just the, the basic grant writing, uh, which needs, which needs to commence. Um, you know, I think one of the things we wanted to clear a threshold of for the board's benefit is that the public safety chiefs are in full support of this initiative. Um, and to be honest with you, I, I was, you know, Chief O'Connor and Chief Judge were the ones who worked with Chief Hart and Chief Burrows, uh, you know, on kind of resurrecting this idea and then, and then brought it, uh, at least to me, I was relatively, I think, uh, late to this. It just happened, like I said, I, I happen to have experience with it, but it wasn't, this wasn't, uh, one, uh, something that I initiated, but I do obviously fully support it. Um, but I think there's, there's the administrative side of this where we do need to write the grant and, and get moving. And so I guess, I haven't heard anything disqualifying, and there are a lot of things to be worked out. But there are, I mean, there's a roles and responsibilities component to this that we need to fulfill, especially if, in my responsibility, um, to the town is to do what I believe is right for, you know, the operational considerations of the community. But I do think we need to educate and inform the public about what this looks like and what they get and, and, um, why we're, why we're pursuing something like this. And to, and to work with the dispatch, I mean, we, uh, you know, like I said, I think we've had very productive dialogues. Um, we want to keep the conversation going. It, you know, I think one of the things that we've done from the very jump is include the dispatchers in the conversation, whereas that, you know, I, I, you know, we haven't said, this is a management right, and we, we, we're going to move forward because this is what we believe is in the operational best interest of the community. Um, we said, we, we believe that this process will be better if you all are a part of it. And, and I think that, I do believe that will still be the case.
So there's clearly, um, it's, there's clearly some time pressures here. There's a need to, to get this grant going. Um, there's a cost to getting that grant written in terms of staff, time, effort, and, um, time away from other projects. I guess what I'm not hearing clearly, um, is, you know, I think the board is looking for some reassurance, uh, and, and I'm not hearing clearly yet, even though you've probably attempted to answer this question, uh, about the town and board's ability not to move forward if, in fact, this next phase, um, ends up with some concerns for all of us.
Sure. Uh, Tom Kennedy, I don't know if you want to touch on that? Um, based on your experience, I know that it's not final until you sign or don't sign the district agreement.
No, and, um, if I may, it's a, um, the next phase on May 4th, um, uh, I mean, I, I should say, um, March 4th, uh, they, um, the grant would be required to be submitted. Um, and it, and it needs a letter of attestation. The letter of attestation doesn't mean that, um, um, it, it moves the project forward, but it really, uh, you can't spend any money off the project until there's a signed governance agreement. Um, you can withdraw in the period of while they're, um, reviewing the grants. And now it's March 4th, and I suspect it would be, you know, uh, March, April, May, uh, possibly, uh, the middle of May, that they would be, uh, you know, starting to review those proposals. Um, they had, uh, which in essence, what you can do is amend, or you can withdraw the, um, you know, the, um, um, you know, the, the, the grant proposal. Um, so which gives you some time, you know, to answer some of your questions and to work out some of the details, you know, with the dispatch union. So that, like I said, I've seen towns do that. Um, you know, where they, um, you know, where they actually spend a little bit of time working out the details with their, with the union. It's always a good thing to work that out ahead of time.
So that, that process would not necessarily be held up until after May, when the, the grant was awarded. That process could occur immediately? With the dispatchers working out the details?
That would allow you between now and, you know, um, you know, the end of March or the beginning of April. I mean, I think that you'd be, you'd be fine to spend that time to, to work out some of these details. I mean, I think it could go up into May, but I'd have to check on that just to make sure when they're going to finalize their review. Uh, and this is a, they do want to make... This is a, they do want to make the award sometime in June, which as Stephen knows, that's somewhat of a, a quick timeframe, you know, for State 911. But I know that they got their, their, you know, their, the guidelines out for this next phase of grants, so early.
Yeah. And if I may just, thank you for your responses here. If I may just pursue a little bit further, can you generally share with us what the wording of that attestation would be?
Yeah, well.
I'm trying to get a sense of how definitive it would be.
It is not. I think Stephen, Stephen, you've done those before. There's some standard language in there. It doesn't commit the town. It does commit them, you know, to joining together to, to pursue it. But oftentimes they use a letter of attestation just to do a feasibility study. So it doesn't require you to, you know, to absolutely do it. It does require just to keep moving forward on it. And they don't allow you to spend any money on that until you, they actually got a signed governance agreement.
Okay.
Yeah, it really is an attestation that we are pursuing for, pursuing with the grant application, and we're going to continue the process. And then like, like Tom said, in between, you, you have some time to continue the dialogue and do some research. But the, some of the things like technological components and stuff like that that need to be integrated are a result of the study. But, you know, I think the big thing is usually, usually it's in this phase between feasibility and development grant, where you're trying to figure out, is it a district? Where's it going to be? Are the service chiefs on board? And we've already cleared all of those hurdles. So I think the focus would be on what would it look like from an operational standpoint.
Okay. All right.
Linda, could I just ask one more question following up on that? So, so there, there, a letter of attestation wasn't necessary to initiate this process is what, is what you're saying, because we've already, the towns have gotten to this point using grant funds, but there was, we didn't have to.
Yeah.
I mean, we didn't sign anything, so that's what I'm assuming.
No. And, and I guess, you know, it's, we're not really looking for a vote. I mean, like I said, I could, you know, I would, I would be able to submit a letter of attestation, but I certainly not saying Jane's comment about public process. So I wanted to come here tonight and present the information to all of you to show you why, you know, we think that this is a good idea and we want to pursue this next grant and make sure there were no kind of deal breakers in your eyes that should prevent us from moving forward to the next stage. And I, if I've, if there is one, I, I haven't heard it. And so it really is, I, I've heard what I think I need to submit a letter of attestation along with the grant, knowing that the board's views on what things you want to see and hear in the next, in the next, you know, stage of this is, is clear. And that's really why we, we brought it here tonight.
Thank you.
I would just.
Jane?
Yeah, sorry. Two other thoughts that came up that, you know, maybe we can just put it out right now, which is, to date, there's been a grant that was, was applied for and then, and delivered this, and then there'll be another, there's, the next phase is equally. And Mr. Kennedy was hired as a consultant. Where did that budget come from? Like, how, how is that being, I assume that's?
That was initiated on Acton's part, I believe. And John, did you get a grant for that?
We, we received a grant to work on this from the town of Acton. And that we, that's why we hired the Collins Center with that funding.
Okay, so Mr. Kennedy was hired by Acton?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate what Matt said. In the near future, it would be great for the board to get three things that Matt mentioned. One, the link to the full report. Two, some kind of way that we can hear from the public, whether it's at, as an upcoming select board meeting, or however you'd like to structure it. And number three, again, some way that we can have a conversation with the dispatchers. And so I think, you know, I think you're hearing support for moving forward, but before we get to the next phase, we should, we should have these three things done in the, so in the next few months.
Yeah, I think if I can, Teri, on your point, to build on your point, I, I would encourage the members who did receive the letter, and I would hope that Joan would share that with me as well, because we have had a lot of productive conversations. I was somewhat surprised to see that there was a letter out there. But I, I think the board member should review it and look at, you know, and kind of reach out to me individually to kind of talk through your individual concerns. And then we can kind of sort through what is unknown now and won't be known until we complete the next round of study, and what are the things that we are doing actively right now to address their concerns. Some of this can start to look like collective bargaining when you get into the conversation. And so that would then, I think, require something more along lines in executive session. I, I, I think I'd prefer to keep it more of a public discussion, but I, but they are a collective bargaining unit that is something that, this is something that could affect their working conditions. So I just want to manage expectations that this may be an executive session thing.
Okay. And I would also ask our fellow select board members, if any of you are available to watch the Acton meeting tonight where this is going to be discussed, that could be helpful. Okay.
What, what time is the Acton meeting?
Meeting starts at seven and the discussion should take place sometime between 7:30 and eight.
Okay. And you just go on to the Acton Town website to get the link?
Yes, I can try to share the link.
John, if you send that to me, I will forward that to the board.
Okay.
And I'd also encourage that anybody that is watching the select board discussions right now from the public who might be interested, that they, you know, that they do this as well. I mean, this is a, you know, we are a public body and, and I know that I can see a number of face, or names out there that are certainly engaged, so.
Okay. So Stephen, do you need anything else from us tonight?
No, this is great feedback. I, I appreciate it. And like I said, there's a lot of unknowns, but I, I do think this is going to be a great fit for us, and I look forward to developing that with all of you.
Well, so we thank all of you who are here this evening to discuss this, and your comments are very helpful to us, and I hope you also heard many of our questions and comments tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. The next agenda item is the FY '20 audit review. Let me just, and I believe we have Scott McIntyre here from Melanson Heath and Company who did the audit. Let me say that as the select board member and chair of the financial audit committee, I have heard this report, and it's important that the select board also hear it as well as a routine matter. So welcome, Scott. And as you can see, I'm sorry you had to wait so long, but we've got a fairly heavy agenda with some heavy items this evening. So we hope that you can keep it as tight as possible, but still give us the essential information that we need to have. Carrie, you're also here. Did you want to introduce it?
No, not necessarily. I would like to, to also mention the other staff members that are here.
Thank you.
Town accountant Mary Barrett and assistant town accountant Erin Mulcahy are here as well.
Thank you both for being here. So Scott, welcome.
Thank you and good afternoon. As the chair instructed, I, I'll be as thorough as I, I need to be, but I will try to do my very best to, to keep this brief. It was an interesting discussion to listen to. I, I always love listening to public safety officials when I go to some of these meetings. It's educational for, for me as a, as just an auditor, if you, if you will. Anyway, to try to keep things brief, as, as the chair indicated, we, we met with the audit committee last month as we concluded and wrapped up our audit of your financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2020, issued around the same time as we did in the prior year. You know, that, given the pandemic, and we think that was, that was pretty good. Some of the highlights, and we're certainly going to take a couple of minutes and walk through some of the key account balances, but from our perspective, some of the key takeaways are that when we came in to begin our field work in the town of Concord, we found the books and records to be in good working order. Key account reconciliations were done on a regular and a timely basis, and there were no disagreements between our firm and the town of Concord's management with respect to how to apply generally accepted accounting principles. And if those three things almost sound like they're a routine part of an audit presentation, that's because auditing standards require that, that we communicate to those charged with governance just those things. If there were any significant audit adjustments that came as a result of our work, we are required to report those to you. We're required to report to you if key accounts are not reconciled on a regular and timely basis. And so, you know, before we, of the highlights, and I see that my screen has gone blank, is every, can people still hear me?
Yes.
I see people, okay. I don't know why I went blank, but I seem to be back, so forgive me. I was just kind of wrapping up those three required communications that the auditing standards required me to report to those charged with governance. Now, if I could, if I could draw your attention to page 19 of the document, and I understand some, some folks may have the document in a hard copy, others may have it in a PDF. It's actually, forgive me, I looked down at my, my notes. Page 19 is the next page we're going to go to. If I could get you to turn your attention to page 11, which if you're following on a PDF or a screenshot of the report, it's page 21. So page 11 of a, of a printed copy and page 21 of, of the PDF. This is our opinion on your financial statements. It goes on for about three pages. I can summarize it very succinctly, I hope, and that is, and based on the auditing procedures we, we applied, and we applied both generally accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, in our opinion, your financial statements are totally in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for, for governmental entities. It's nothing new here, but it really is the highlight of the audit. When you can read this opinion that goes on, again, on the print copy, it starts on page 11, it tells you the standards that we followed, and that in our opinion, your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles here in the United States. Now, if you could quickly turn your page over to page 19, which would be page 29 on a, on a PDF, a PDF version's always going to be plus 10. If there's one takeaway from the audit, other than the fact that we found the books and records to be in good working order, it's on page 19. It's a component of your.
Excuse me one minute. We don't have the same page numbers that, I don't think, so.
All right. Then let me, I, I was going to try to be brief and not share my screen. Let me, let me take an extra minute then and, and, and get it, get it shared up here. Do you see the, the Melanson, oh, hold there, one more.
Yes, we have it now.
You, you have the audit opinion, Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you. This was page 11 of the document, very simply where I was referring to the fact that, you know, it tells you a little bit about management's responsibility, our responsibility, and back over here towards the end here, you have our opinions right in the middle of your screen now. And what this is saying in very plain language is that, in our opinion, your financial statements are totally in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for governmental entities in the United States. Now, if I go over to page 19 of the document, which should be page 21 of the PDF, sorry, 29, forgive me, I wasn't ready to share my screen. But, you know, starting in around here, where you see a table of, of fund balance accounts, other than the fact that our audit went well and we did not discover any, the need for any significant audit entries as a result of our work, this particular page, page 19 of your written report, probably includes the most important take or takeaway from your financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2020. What you see here is, is a, is sort of a table of your general fund balances for June 30, 2020 compared to June 30, 19, and the change. In the first place that almost all readers are going to turn to is your unassigned fund balance, which right in the middle of the screen, you see has an account balance of just over $9.9 million. You also see just to the right of that, that in the prior year, that was about $13.8 million. So you do see a decrease in that key account balance. And again, I call it a key account balance because it's the first place that almost all readers are going to turn to, to, to look at the financial condition of the community. And clearly, there's approximately a $3.9 million drop in that key account balance. You scroll down a little bit on the page, you know, the town's done a nice job about adding some detail here. It starts with the unassigned fund balance. I'm not going to, to read every, every word of it, but the town's done a really nice job in outlining, we think in very simple language, what the driving factors were to see a decrease in your key account balance of about $3.9 million. Well, actually, I'll, I'll take just a second and at least paraphrase much of this. What you're telling your reader of your financial statements is that the unassigned fund balance decreased by $3.9 million, and it's driven by positive budgetary results of about $317,000, coupled with the fact that you used about $3.7 or almost $3.8 million in free cash for fiscal year 2021. So for next year's budget purposes, you utilized $3.8 million. The positive operating results of 317 get mitigated by the fact that the community chose to use about $3.8 million in fund balance. That's why the net number is a decrease of about 3.9 in, in your unassigned fund balance. Now, I think the three bullet items at the very bottom of this page are, are telling story, because to just tell your reader that you used $3.8 million in fund balance doesn't tell the whole, whole picture. What you did with that money is very important, particularly for a community rated the way Concord is. If they just saw that you used $3.8 million in fund balance, financial institutions and credit rating agencies would, would, would want to know what you did with those dollars. And clearly, in the, indicated in the first bullet item is you, you, you used free cash, $2 million of your free cash, and established a middle school building stabilization. That's, that's a real smart use of, of free cash, and, and it's not using it to, to finance operations or anything like that. It's used to fund a stabilization fund for, for potential middle school improvements or, or replacement. The next bullet item there is about $3.7 million that was used to reduce the levy. Past practice shows the town's usually used about $1 million of your free cash for the levy. For fiscal '21, I, I wasn't involved in that, but I'm sure it had a lot to do with the, the pandemic and, and what have you. The town chose to use three point, pardon me, $1.7 million in free cash to, to reduce the, the levy. I won't even get into the $50,000 to supplement some, some expenditures there, but for the most part, that $3.8 million of free cash, most of it was put in, about half of it was put into a stabilization fund, and the other half, $1.7 million was used to, to reduce the levy. So just to recap, because we do think this one page sort of summarizes everything, most readers, yourself included, we think, most readers of your financial statement would want to know. And that is, you had a drop in your unassigned fund balance, but why did that occur? It occurred because you had positive budgetary results softened by what you chose to do with, with some of your certified free cash. Now, just to put this in terms of perspective on, on the actual balance sheets, I'm going to turn our attention over to page 29. This is your June 30, 2020 governmental funds balance sheet, and the first column of numbers is your general fund. And these three, these four numbers right here at the bottom of, of, of print page 29, in the first column, are those same numbers that we saw back, back on page 19 of, of your MDNA with that nice disclosure that indicates why your unassigned fund balance dropped by, by about $3.9 million. Just wanted to, so to, to put page 19 in its proper context so that you saw where the $9.9 million actually resides on, on the balance sheet. resides on the balance sheet and not just in MDNA. Now, last page I want to turn to is to your budget versus actual schedule. I indicated, and it is written on page 19, you had positive budgetary results of about $317,000. Let's take a look at that and where some of the amounts are coming from. If you see down here on the right-hand column, you see a $317,000 in favorable budgetary results. That's made up of, towards the top of the page, approximately, pardon me, three quarters of a million dollars in a revenue shortfall. In other words, your revenues came in less than anticipated, and most of that deals with the motor vehicle size collections in fiscal year 2020. Not a result that's dissimilar to most communities in the Commonwealth. As a point of reference, the total favorable revenues a year ago were about $1.5 million. So you do see a significant swing on your revenues as a result of fiscal year 2020. On the expenditure side, you see unspent appropriations, sometimes referred to as turnbacks from the various departments, of just under $1.1 million. That number's actually up a little bit over the prior year. In the prior year, that was $800,000. The three quarters of a million dollar shortfall on the revenue side, mostly driven by the unfavorable variance budget to actual wise of motor vehicle size collections, coupled with the unspent appropriations, how you have positive budgetary results of $317,000. And again, that's the positive news. Keep in perspective that the reason your unassigned fund balance went down really has less to do with FY '20 than it does what you chose and the actions that were taken during fiscal '20, but for fiscal year 2021. So, again, and the reason for those drops are the $2 million that was put in to the stabilization fund for the middle school and the $1.7 million that was used to reduce the tax levy. If I could just backtrack a couple of pages, I want to make a couple of real quick comments. When we looked at the general fund balance sheet, that is what we refer to as a short-term perspective balance sheet. And it's, again, it's the first place that most readers turn to. But another page is your statement of net positions, and it's document page number 26. And I'm looking at page two of your statement of net position, and just wanted to point out two other account balances that get a lot of attention. Not necessarily just in Concord, but even more so outside of Concord. But that deals with your net pension liability of $16.9 or $17 million and your net OPEB liability of just under $36 million. Those are two key account balances that financial institutions and credit rating agencies will look at. Pardon me. As a point of reference, at June 30, 2019, your net pension liability and your governmental activities was about $26 million. So it's come down to about $17 million. Most of that is driven by favorable investment earnings through the end of the retirement system year, which was 12/31/2019. On the OPEB side of things, the $35.7 million, that's actually up a few million dollars. That's up from $32 million in the prior year. And the driving factor behind that increase, a few million dollar increase in that liability is because the community voted to, or the community primarily in conjunction with your actuary, reduced the discount rate that was used to measure future earnings from 7.14% down to 6.5. And as you decrease your discount rate, then your net OPEB liability would therefore increase, and you'll see the impact of that over the next few years. That is a real quick walkthrough. I'm going to stop sharing my screen for a minute. That's a very, very quick walkthrough of our audit of your financial statements, as well as some of the key highlights in your financial statements, both from a general fund standpoint, which is a short-term perspective, and then those key, I don't want to call them unfunded liabilities, the pension and OPEB, because both your retirement system, your retirement system is very well funded, and I think, without looking down at my notes, I think your OPEB is 34%, 35% funded, which is much better than most communities, and it puts you in line with your peer or similarly rated AAA communities. You know, so that's your funding percentage on your OPEB. We did issue a management letter. I'm not going to walk through it unless there are any particular questions on it. I think the key highlight there, as highlighted on page one and two, is that we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. The descriptions of those are outlined on the opening letter. As you might expect, the descriptions are not favorable. The good news is we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. We do have a few recommendations to improve things, one of which I know dealt with some upcoming GASB statements that will require some significant changes. And there were a few follow-up items from our June 30, 19 engagement, pardon me, our June 30, 19 management letter, which did not get fully corrected in fiscal year '20. Again, not dissimilar to a lot of communities that we work with. So about, just about a year ago, things got very difficult for a number of months and have remained difficult. And so Concord, like so many of our clients, wasn't able to fully implement corrective actions to some of our prior recommendations. So we've repeated those, and I think in some cases outlined, you know, some reasonable suggested timeframes. I will tell you, if you haven't had a chance to read the letter, there are some wonderful responses by the community in there. I think there's agreement on the issues and the corrective action that's needed. It's just a matter of implementing it to bring about the desired change. I'll just leave it there, and if there are any other questions, I will do my very best to answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions from select board.
So when it comes to the unassigned balances, doesn't it reflect that this new unassigned balance reflect that we're actually now finally within our policy of having 5% to 10% of unassigned in a year relative to our overall budget, whereas in past years, we've been over 10%? So the level, even though it drops significantly, isn't it now, is still that unassigned balance? Isn't it a relatively healthy number?
I would agree with that, sir. There's probably things I was going to get into, and maybe with trying to move a little too quickly, I did not get into those types of things. But it is, it's just slightly below the 10% threshold, and it is in line with policy. But it absolutely still is a solid, and I would say, a healthy balance sheet.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, doesn't it, isn't it the case that having over 10% can almost be unhealthy in that it creates kind of a Christmas in April type of atmosphere sometimes? So I kind of think it's a positive personally.
I understand that. My focus, I just, because of the almost $3.9 million drop in that fund balance, I was really just trying to focus on the reasons for that.
Okay. The other thing is, should we be aware of any fundamental changes in accounting principles for municipalities going forward that might affect future audits or our way that we budget?
Two-part answer to your question, sir. And the second part of what you asked there is with respect to how you budget. Generally speaking, the GASB and the accounting pronouncements are mutually exclusive from how a government budgets. But there are a couple of new standards coming down, coming forth. In particular, they're referred to as GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, their statement number 84, and their statement number 87. 84 deals with called fiduciary activities. I almost look at this as a location issue. It doesn't necessarily, it will, it could change where certain accounts and activities are presented on your audited financial statements. Instead of being an agency fund, which is a page in your financial statements that I didn't turn to, the activities that are accounted for there need to be reclassified over to other pages of the financial statements. Further, some of those agency funds were just balances that were being held, and they were just an asset offset by a liability. Now you're going to need to capture the accounting for the, I'll call them the inflows and the outflows of that activity. It's a fancy way of saying you may need to expand your chart of accounts to include revenue and expenditure accounts for some of those items that are accounted for in the agency fund.
And I guess a question for our own finance personnel is, are our accounting systems prepared for that?
We're working on getting that done, making those changes, so we are, we will be prepared for that change.
And I think just to follow up on that, most of you probably know that we are interested in updating our financial software. We actually received funding approval from town meeting a couple of years ago, and it's a slow-moving project, but I do think that we are sort of at the limits of our current financial software. But this, these new GASB standards coming into effect aren't advancing the need to update our financial software where they are, and we need to do that.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? Scott, I think you did a very good job of zeroing in on the important items, and I particularly want to thank Carrie and Mary and others from her team who worked all year long to get us to this point where we're even looking at the audit. So thank you. It was a good audit report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll now move on to something just as important, but certainly a different tone we'll take here. A couple, at our last board meeting in the packet, were included some letters from students at the Willard School, a new class of students who have looked at and learned about George Washington Dugan. And we were inspired by those letters and invited several people to speak with us today so that we can learn more about him as well and some of the issues related to the plaque in town. So, let's see, Tish, I believe you're here, Tish Hopkins?
Tish Hopkins is here. And Linda, if I could jump in and do a brief overview?
That'd be great.
So, we did receive letters recently. I know a little over a year ago, we had received letters from, I think, a previous group of students making the same request, and it was something that was actually one of my first assignments here in Concord. And so we, I started to ask around about the organization, you know, who can I talk to about this? And I was referred to Tish Hopkins, who is our superintendent of our cemeteries. And that was definitely the right person because she has just an extraordinary amount of knowledge of the Dugan family history and has really made this a passion project and a deep commitment on behalf of the town, which I was really amazed at how much she knew about it, how much she really wanted to try and do something. And the only thing I will say is kind of an overarching setting is the town generally, but really mostly Tish, has spent an extraordinary amount of time researching this project and trying to find a way to properly honor George Washington Dugan. And the, it turns out, like many things, it was more, the simple request of getting a name added to the Civil War monument on Monument Square is a lot more complicated than just taking off the plaque and adding a name and putting it back on because of the standards that were put in place at various times over 100 years ago. And so I think the goal was to find a way to honor his service and tell his story. And so I'm, you know, I'll let Tish talk to some of the details of that and her view on how to do that best.
Hi, sorry. So I'll start first. For people who don't know, I'll start with a little history about George Dugan.
Tish, before you start, thank you for being here. But can I ask, do you have other people here with you to speak about this, or will you be doing all the speaking on it?
No, I would welcome. Sidney Holloman Presley is the teacher of the students who have written the letters.
Oh, great.
And I think Rick Fries, it says Nancy James on the computer, but Rick Fries is here, and he's a person who, this has been a passion for him for a long time, and he wrote the wording that's on the plaque, hopefully, that gets approved. So also may speak. I don't know about anybody else.
Principal Matt Lucy is here as well.
Oh, okay. Hello.
So good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that people involved were acknowledged before you began, so please go ahead.
So just a little history about George Dugan. He was born in Concord to Thomas Dugan and Jenny Dugan. Thomas and Jenny were a law-respected farming family in Concord. You're probably aware of the Jenny Dugan Road, Jenny Dugan Well, Jenny Dugan Brook are all named for his mother. He was also a farmer in town. We know that he was married at one point, but widowed, didn't have any children. And at the age of 44, we assume saw an ad in the Boston Journal on, I think, February 16th of 1863, where they were calling for men of color to join the newly formed 54th Regiment led by Colonel Robert Gould Shaw. So he answered that call. Four days later was in Boston signing up, and the next day was in Reedville training at the age of 44, twice the age of most of the people in that unit. Didn't have to go, was a farmer here in town with his own home and his land, and just chose to go. So, served until July. I don't know if anybody saw the movie Glory long ago, definitely worth watching if you want to. This regiment led the attack at Fort Wagner on Morris Island. They were the first regiment to try to breach the fortress, the garrison, a heavily-guarded garrison, and their troops were really decimated. I think there were 102 killed, or 125 wounded, 20 killed, 52 ended up missing, missing in action, and George Dugan was one of those 52 who have been considered missing in action since that day. Because he was considered missing in action, and there was no account of his death, that he was definitely killed in the battle, he wasn't eligible to be on Concord's memorial. Since that time, his classification, we have found out in the 1930s, the military reclassified him. They went through all of the soldiers and sailors of mass volumes, and I guess just to clean up their records, reclassified him as supposed killed. But I can give you a little information about the Civil War Memorial. This is, this is the large obelisk that's right in the center of Monument Square. One side does list many of the men who did not come back from the Civil War. There was some criteria set forth. The memorial itself, let's see, I have some little notes here. The memorial itself was approved at town meeting in 1866 and was dedicated in 1867. A committee of 25 people were formed at town meeting to design and plan this monument. Originally, 32 people were on the monument, criteria being that they had a birthplace, home, or grave here in Concord. So it appears that those 25 people were responsible for choosing the names that were put on it, and originally, like I said, there were 32. So in 1881, following some requests, I guess, from public, from family members, a committee of five was formed at town meeting to correct the omissions from the soldiers' monument of certain names that should have been inscribed. At that time, there was a request to put 12 more names on the monument, and they established the qualifications that the man should have been a soldier or sailor in the War of the Rebellion, should have died in the war or by reason of wounds received or disease contracted in the service, and should have found in Concord a birthplace, home, or grave. A request for 12 names to be added was made at that time. One was-- One was denied, 11 were added. So then again, in 1911, a committee was formed, a committee of five this time was formed because there was, again, a request to add names to the memorial. And their request was made for nine names to be added. Four were denied, five were added, and they were denied for different reasons. There was no proof that they had ever lived in Concord. They may have attended school here. Or had family that lived here, but if they couldn't prove that they lived here, they weren't added to the memorial. And both, in both of those cases, the entire plaque on that memorial was replaced, that whole bronze plaque. And they did take the opportunity as well to fix any spelling errors that had been made and fix some names that had been written in the wrong way. And that memorial sat, obviously, for years until the, just more recently, the newer war memorial that's over across the street that was redone. In 1998, a request was made to add a name to the World War II memorial. And that, that war memorial committee even then referred back to the criteria set by the war memorial committee back in the 1800s. This man had come home with PTSD received during the war. And though he didn't live a quality of life, he did live. And therefore, it was determined that he was ineligible for inclusion on the memorial. As recently, in, in 2019, there was a social media campaign, campaign to add a veteran's name to the Vietnam Memorial for a resident of Carlisle because he had graduated from the Concord Carlisle High School. Never even got to be an official request because he'd never lived here. George Dugan did live here, but there was never an actual account of his death. His war records never said that he actually died. There are other veterans from the Civil War. Asa Melvin, for example, who was, who was in a mass grave at Petersburg. We don't know necessarily where he's buried, but we do know that he died because it was an account of his death in his military record. And George never got that, unfortunately. So though I could argue it both ways, honestly, I could argue that his name, that we should replace that entire plaque on that Civil War memorial and put his name on it. But if he doesn't meet the criteria that was set forth back in the 1860s, then maybe that shouldn't happen. I think it would be nice to honor him. And I think that the plaque that I think you got, I'm pretty sure you got a copy of, I think does that. I think him having his own plaque is kind of nice because we have the opportunity to tell a little about him and to give people a history that maybe, maybe interests them to, to look more up about him and learn about him and what he did, which the men on the plaque right now don't have. They just have their name. So, I don't know, nice to, definitely nice to honor him in some way. And I think this little plaque might do that. I envision it being, if you're familiar, of course, the snow's hiding it right now, but around that memorial that's in Monument Square is a kind of a patio, a circular patio of cobbles. And I think it'd be nice to have it placed inside those cobbles, right in front of the plaque that exists with the, with the names of the other Civil War veterans.
So, thank you, Tish. You're bringing us a proposal today in addition to giving us this wonderful history. So that's helpful. So, I'm wondering if Rick Fries wants to add any comments to this, or Sidney, who's with us today, or Matt?
Thank you, Linda. You're seeing a photograph of my beautiful wife Nancy there. Her computer is more Zoom-friendly than mine. But my name is Rick Fries. I want to thank Tish for setting the stage for what we hope will be serious consideration of not correcting a mistake, but really recognizing, you know, omission over the years.
Yes, for the video, do you put on?
You might put the video on if you like replacing Nancy's photo.
You're asking our, Jeremy? Yep.
There it is. Okay. I think that, I think that was put up on, on your end rather than mine. So this is a little better. Thank you. It's not so much a mistake as it is, is an omission. George Washington Dugan made the supreme sacrifice. There is no convincing evidence, which is to say no DNA or genetic material. Fort Wagner is underwater now. It was on Morris Island off the coast of South Carolina. You had the Charleston Harbor to the east, the Atlantic Ocean to the west, completely sea-locked. All those men in the famed 54th Regiment were present and accounted for on July 18th, 1863. The 52 never accounted for, never made, never made it home. None of those men returned home, including George Washington Dugan. There is Confederate testimony at the time to state a persuasive case that these men, their bodies were placed in mass graves. So, the language crafted for the tablet, Tish suggested it might be embedded in the paving stones directly in front of the monument confirms what the Massachusetts Exchequer and General's Office has stated, and that is that George Washington Dugan is presumed killed. So, I think we can state a very compelling case, if not a convincing case, to add his name, not on the monument, but at least minimally on this tablet embedded in those pavers. And Sidney, I would certainly welcome your input and want to thank you and your classroom of wonderful students for assisting and pushing this, this forward. I wrote the book Concord and the Civil War, and it was published in 2014. I then sent a letter to then-town manager Chris Whalen and the Select Board, and it's been moving along progressively. And Sidney, very, very grateful to you and your students for putting this front and center. Thank you.
Thank you for adding to the discussion tonight, Rick. Okay, Sidney, did you want to make some brief comments?
Yes, I'd love to. Thank you also, Rick. With your help and Tish's help, our class zoomed with both of these people and we got a lot of information about George Washington Dugan from them. I did initially, two years ago, my class sent letters. And at that time, they said that he was not qualified. So we tried again this year. And we do ultimately want him to be recognized for the service he made for our country and for the town of Concord. So we are happy with the plaque that is probably going in, but our push really was to get his name added, since one of the main criteria that said he wasn't qualified was that they weren't sure he died during the war. But there is a lot of evidence to support that he did die during battle. So that's what our, my class and my students were writing about.
Thank you. It was a wonderful project and the letters we received were well-done and you could tell they were excited about what they had learned. So thank you for...
Thank you. Thank you for reading them.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the town manager, you know, I wasn't sure that this was going to be in a proposal form this evening. Is there any reason for us not to consider that?
No, I think we wanted to, you know, well, let me say this. We were waiting on approval of the plaque, and I think it arrived Friday, Thursday afternoon and Friday morning when we sent it, when we promptly put it in the packet. And the one thing I want to say to Sidney is, you know, I, there was a little bit of an overlap, but when I started, like I said, the original set of letters were turned over. And we started working on trying to find a way to do this because we got the same answer on adding it to the plaque on the memorial. And so we said, all right, well, if we can't do that, how do we find the best way to honor him? And you heard, obviously, Tish has proven that she was certainly the right person from the town organization to work on this, without a doubt. And I just, I'm inspired by her effort to get the history and to push this forward and to, and to even get a proposed plaque. So the plaque is a relatively new piece to all of this, like I said, a few days old. I think if we wanted, if the board felt, and I think the key thing is that it is the Select Board, I believe it's the Select Board who can, who can make this decision based on the prior authorities, you know, and the prior decisions on the Civil War Memorial. And so if I was going to ask for, if I was going to suggest something, I would suggest perhaps an authorization or to, the board to authorize the town manager to complete the installation of the plaque in substantial form as in the packet, in the location described during this discussion, and then I'll work with Tish to make sure that we get it done.
Okay. Do I hear any other comment from the Select Board members? Okay, I would...
Jane has her hand up.
Okay, Jane?
I had one other question, and I don't know that, this is not, this is not about the insertion of a plaque in the cobblestones as, as Tish has, has proposed. This is about thinking about the other ways we recognize those who are inscribed on the obelisk and, and we recognize those who have served Concord from Concord or served this country from Concord. And that's historically, it may have slipped everybody's mind because it's been a while in the pandemic, but historically, we read the names at Memorial Day during the ceremonies and presentations. We don't need to determine that now, but I do think this, this is a conversation we should continue. Because I, I, I for one would like to find a way to honor George Washington Dugan.
Okay.
Yeah, I, Jane, sorry, Linda, I agree. And I'm already thinking of, once we get the plaque ordered, fabricated, and get ready for installation, hopefully we'll be at a place where we can have a celebration and a memorial, a memorial of the installation and open, the commemoration of his service and the plaque. And like I said, hopefully we'll be able to do that. Meaning pandemic restrictions will be off so we can have a proper celebration, is what I meant by that.
I think I was just actually just saying, I would like to challenge us to think about the way we read every year. I'm assuming that that will be something we reconvene at some point without, once we're through this current stage of pandemic at Memorial Day. And I, I would like to think of a way to include George Washington Dugan and perhaps others that we don't as of right now because of the criteria that Tish was describing.
Have their names because they, they all have little biographies included in the reports. So I do have the names of the people and the reasons why they thought they should be added.
Seems that we could say their names at, at Memorial Day regardless of who's on the plaque.
That's my point. Thank you, Matt.
Yeah. Okay, good.
And I just wanted to say that I think we shouldn't give up the idea of getting his name on the actual memorial because it's kind of a, we're segregating him in a way by putting him in a separate place, his name in a separate place. So I applaud Rick and Tish and the, and Sidney and Matt for all the work that's gone into this. And I'm not trying to diminish that because that's, it's wonderful that we've gotten this far, but down the road, probably after our terms are up here, it, it, it would be something to keep in the back of our heads to be able to move forward with that and some of the other people.
Well, Susan, I did get, because that's, that's been my concern too. I love this plaque and I put the insignia for the 54th Mass on it and the insignia from the 54th Flag. And it has this information that you can read about George Dugan, and I think it's great for people to see that. But I would hate for there to be a perceived distinction between races, that, that he has his own plaque for any other reason than he didn't meet the criteria from 1867 because no one's going to know what that was.
Yeah.
For the most part. We know it, but people, people looking at it aren't going to know it.
Yeah.
To add his, to replace that entire plaque, I did get a price of about $16,000 from a company in, I think, New Hampshire. I don't remember, is it New Hampshire or New York? I don't remember. To replace that entire plaque and add one name.
So Susan, you were suggesting not to move forward with the other plaque?
No, I, no, absolutely. To move forward with the one that's been proposed today here to put in the cobbles, but that as a broader issue to, um, keep in mind that, that at some point down the road, we maybe can put him and others on the existing plaque.
All right. Any other comments from board members?
I just want to say I agree with that, and, and I'd like that to be on the record in the minutes that the board, you know, has an eye toward correcting this permanently in the future.
I could add one more thing.
Okay, Rick?
In 1908, the town of Concord appointed a committee to research all of Concord soldiers who went off to war, the Civil War, the regiments they were attached to, the battles they were engaged in. Now, my sense is what prompted this was simultaneously Daniel Chester French was designing the Melvin Memorial. So I think town officials determined we really need to find out more about these soldiers. So there was a seven-member committee appointed. They issued a report at the 1909 town meeting listing 450 men who called Concord home, birthplace, or resting place. Currently, at least 157 of them interred at Sleepy Hollow Cemetery. Now, that seven-member committee, in referencing Dugan's service, described him as the only man of color who went off to war from this town. They paid tribute to him. They honored him. They recognized his devotion to duty, recognized it with pride and distinction. So whether it is adding his name to the tablet on the monument or creating a separate tablet, either way, we honor this man for his devotion to duty, his sacrifice to his regiment, his town, and his nation.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Rick. I'm going to propose that we entertain a motion to authorize the town manager to have this plaque honoring George Washington Dugan as proposed today to be manufactured and installed in front of the existing Civil War monument. And also encourage further study of George Washington Dugan's place on the original monument.
Would you like me to repeat that as a motion, or can I just say so moved?
You may, you may say so moved.
So moved. Can I just add also to remind everybody that we're going to read his name and potentially others annually as we read the other, as we read the other names of Concord's fallen veterans?
Thank you, Jane. Yeah, as amended with Jane's words, yeah. Okay.
Second?
Okay. And do, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hutchkus?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. And that's unanimous in the chair, so declares. I want to thank all of you who have played a part in bringing this to our attention. And it will, has generally, generally informed all of us, and we will continue to work on this going into the future. So thank you, and keep up the good work, everyone. Important part of our history. Okay, we'll move on now to the next agenda item, changing course yet again, and that's a review of the public-private partnership agreement status. Let me say that, you know, as you know, the original committee was formed in 2016, I believe it was, or submitted their final report to the select board in 2016 with some additional material in 2017. A great deal of effort and thought and public input went into that process. Subsequently, I believe it was around 2018, there was some follow-up to that effort with the former town manager and trying to visit the list of public partnerships that were originally identified by the committee. And then we had a new town manager, and a lot has transpired in the interim. And I think at the select board's encouragement, as well as probably the town manager's own interest in following up on this, this has been revisited now, and there is the first part of a report in revisiting this topic. So Stephen, do you want to add any other comments to that?
No, I think that's a good encapsulation of the, of the history, Linda, and I just think so Chris Carmody in the office, who we all know, has graciously agreed to help with this effort. And the first step was, okay, let's, let's take an audit of what we have. There was a list of 30-something agreements. That was a part of the report of the P3 committee. And so that was a few years ago, as Linda noted. So let's, I just said, let's get a snapshot of where things are so I can get a sense of where, what are the timelines that we need to pay attention to, you know, find out which of these apply to the guidelines suggested by the public-private partnership policy and kind of move on from there. And naturally, that turned into a lot more complicated process that Chris can talk to. And so what he's going to present is really, and what was in the pack, it was really just a snapshot of that audit of the existing agreements. And then what we're going to, we can talk about a little bit after is where we're going to go from here. The only thing I'll say, and I, you know, in all candor, this, it's important to have a handle on these, but it has taken a while, and it's kind of a, an ongoing issue as we try and really focus on our select board goals, the town's organizational goals, and most importantly, pandemic response and vaccines. And so there are, there are, there is work that gets displaced, and unfortunately, kind of getting through this in a fuller way is one of those things. And I don't want to make excuses, it's just a time equation, but we wanted to show you that we have been working on it, we have taken requests seriously, and this is part one. So Chris, I don't know, do you want to talk about your research and what you found?
Yeah, thank you, members of the select board for making time for this. And thank you to Terry to bringing this back up into the fold. We, we have been working on identifying the public-private partnerships that are still around. And if you don't mind, I'll just share my screen to show you the report. So just for, for members of the public that were looking for this, it was included in the February 8th select board, board packet. We'll be issuing a second part to the report once we've, can present a more definitive list of partnerships that fit in to the criterion. Okay. Good, so can you see that?
We can.
Thank you. So just as a little bit of review, the committee, and we, we are aware that the, the chair of the committee is interested in participating in this discussion. She was not available today, and I can see now that there are members of that committee on this call, and Madam Chair, maybe you're interested in hearing some of their thoughts after hearing this. So just as a little bit of a review, we included this in the board packet. We didn't actually have a chance to talk about this at the February 8th select board meeting, so the committee was formed in December 2016, I'm sorry, in 2016, and they issued the report December 28th, 2016, and an addendum on February 6th, 2017. They listed their identified partnerships as, in that report. And their, their charge was to become knowledgeable about public-private partnerships in Concord to solicit public input and consider whether the town should make the process transparent or provide ways for the public to participate in reviewing short and long-term private partnerships. They identified 33 former or existing partnerships that, as you would understand, partnerships are usually for a period of time. So a lot of those have faded out as the needs have been fulfilled or abandoned by the town. And we have worked on updating that, that list. So this memo includes the original report, the addendum, the original list, and then the list of partnerships we identified. So my apologies for the, the tiny type. I'm not going to go into the report now, except to say it's available. You've probably reviewed it, and it will give the former chair a chance to speak to it if she's, if she can at a later date. Let's see, the, this is the, the initial list that was provided in 2016, and the select board adopted a policy July 10th, 2017, basically having a two-fold process for new partnerships that were over $150,000, that, that sponsor should come to the town manager and talk about a memorandum of understanding. And then that memorandum would be select forwarded to the, to the P3 committee. So as part of the recommendations for the report, the committee called for a standing P3 committee to review and evaluate memorandums of understanding. They also recommended that the town enter into any memorandum of, of understanding for any existing partnership, and that they, the committee would ultimately forward their recommendations to the select board for their review. For existing partnerships, I'm sorry, for, for new partnerships, it would be $150,000. Or, I'm sorry, for new partnerships, it's $150,000. For existing partnerships, it's either $150,000 or lasting for over a year. So this is our, our list, there's about 55 on here. You can see there, there's just a list of partnerships identified originally by the committee. On the left-hand column, you'll see, if it has an A after the number, that means that it's a new partnership that has been identified by the town. And then we've also categorized each partnership into a general category of public benefit. And we've also noted whether the, the partnership was documented and what the status generally is of this list. This, this list is going to be perfected as we get more details, including determining whether there is any sort of documentation, which is, which is part of the, the driving, the, the length of this project is, is just getting those details. So, yeah, that is, that is the update for, for you for now.
So clearly, a lot of work had to go into just getting to this first phase, just to see what that initial list looked like in terms of current time. Do you expect to differentiate or at least identify those that are specifically 150K and above?
We do, and I, I, you know, as a relatively new employee of the town, I think it's really a wonderful thing to see all the different types of interest in contributing to town efforts by private entities. That really speaks a lot to the Concord community. But yes, Madam Chair, to answer your question, we, we do expect to differentiate that, yep.
Thank you, Terry.
Well, thank you, Chris, and everyone who's worked on this. I found this really eye-opening. I am just amazed, we have 50-something, 58 public partner, public-private partnerships? That's just staggering. And I see that you've added, a lot of the new ones are farms. And I had always been thinking of these farms as strictly private. I hadn't realized, I guess I'm, I'm wondering, what is the definition of, for this project? What is your definition of public-private partner?
Well, I think, sorry, go ahead, Chris.
Oh, sorry, yeah, it's really any sort of engagement between a private entity and the town that involves, I mean, the, the report specifies their definition of the partnership, which is basically result, a relationship between a private entity and the town that results in a government asset or, or use of government facility.
I mean, it's, if you have a lease with someone, like a farm, like if the town on the farm, we have a lease with an operator, that really, that really is a partnership, even though it is not, it's not like CC at play, but it still is a partnership. And so we took a, an expansive view of public-private partnerships, you know, just to make sure that we fully understood what was out there. And I'll be honest with you, we may, now that we have this expansive list, and once we get to the next phase, there may be, in the analysis, we may say, you know what? That really doesn't fit with the intent of it. And so we need to kind of take it off the list because it really isn't what the, the report and the finding contemplated. But we wanted to have it, you know, an all-in, you know, field, just so we could start from there and then pare down what really fits with the policy. But yeah, that's, you know, it's, like I said, we took a pretty liberal definition.
Yeah, that's really interesting. I mean, I hadn't realized, so all, you're saying all the farms on this list are leasing town assets?
Town land, yeah.
Yeah, town land, yeah.
Wow, I just had never realized that. Okay. And my other question is, since these policies were adopted in 2017 by the select board, have we been following the policies that were adopted? I know COVID maybe has come in as a problem in 2020, but if they were adopted back in 2017, were they followed in those years?
Well, I'll have to defer to people who are here until I got here, but I can tell you that I don't think we've had one come up that really would have been over the threshold. But that's one of the reasons why we went through this, to make sure we don't miss one. You know, there's, we have lease agreements that are coming due, and, and so there's a couple of those that are kind of on the, they, they were on the front burner until COVID, now they're on the back burner. But that's part of this analysis is, okay, what do we need to make sure that we have a public forum on because they are subject to the policy? And so that, again, that's the next stage of this is answering that question, Terry. In terms of what happened before, you know, August of 2019, I really can't be sure.
Okay, thanks.
Madam Chair, maybe, I see Ms. Kio has put on her camera, and maybe she wants to speak to this a little bit?
Okay. Dory, would you like to comment? You're on mute.
Dory, you're on mute.
Do it, okay. Now, good. Sorry, I apologize. We're delighted. Jean Goldsbury, I'm sorry, who is really the long chair of the committee while it existed, and we've all sort of stayed together because we have a feeling of, we never really got to see anything implemented. So it's, it's wonderful for those of us who really devoted many, many hours to this to see some thought being given. Just a very small thought, and one of it is that there was supposed to be a regular checking up on what's the status of partnerships. That really is one of, was one of our major goals, and I'm very happy that, that you people are looking at it now. It's wonderful that this is being updated. And so I'm sorry again, Jean just could not be here this afternoon, but our whole committee is standing ready because we had a sense of, we've got a report in and it was accepted, but then nothing really happened. And so to have something happening after all that work is, is really, really very, very heartening, I will say. So thank you all, and really thank you, Stephen and, and Chris, for following through on this. It's been sitting there, and, and many hours of blood, sweat, not blood quite, but a lot of sweat and tears went into this, and to have something happening with it is really gratifying. Thank you very much, all of you.
Dory, thank you for those comments. Just to put that in perspective, when I was first considering coming on the select board, a former select board member told me, there'll be many things that you work on that you may or may not see come to fruition in your tenure. And so this is one of those projects where, you know, it takes a little while, but we're getting there. So, yeah, thanks, Chris, and everyone who's been working on this.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We'll look forward to the next phase of that discussion. And now we're moving on to several things that relate to the Regional Housing Services Office. And the first one is the Q2 report, and I think Liz Russ is here, and I also saw Marcia Rasmussen here earlier. So Liz?
Yeah, hello, everybody. It's nice to be with you this afternoon, this evening. So there are a few agenda items, and I know you're a little tight on time probably. So on the Q2 status report, I'm just going to offer that we submit this report on a quarterly basis. It goes through the RHSO administrative activities, some of the regional programs that we're working on, and then into specific monitoring requirements and projects and initiatives for each community, as well as the home program activities, and then any local support. We usually end the report with a recap of where each community is from an hours basis. The RHSO is a municipal collaboration where each community, in essence, is, is, purchases or contracts for a certain number of hours per the year, and so that's what we do on our tracking in terms of how Concord fares for other communities. Concord is about 15% of the RHSO effort, closely with Acton at 13% and Weston at 13%. The communities share a little bit differently. Sudbury is on the higher side at 23% and Wayland at 4%. So Concord uses right, right in the sort of standard middle, not standard, but like a middle amount, if you will, of RHSO support. Concord pays for its RHSO fee through five different funding sources, making good use of all available affordable housing avenues. And I was just going to leave it at that. I know it's been in the packet, if there's anyone from the, you know, the public, and certainly from the select board, if you had specific questions, I'd be glad to take them.
So let me first say, Liz, thank you very much. And, you know, it's very, I think it, it's helpful to see these Q, Q reports in terms of just the breadth of all of the items that are included under the umbrella of the Regional Housing Services Offices, but also all the technicalities that are involved with our affordable housing monitoring. So I, I think that's helpful. I think we do, may have a couple of board questions, board member questions, Matt?
I was just curious why Concord doesn't have any emergency rental assistance programs like some of these other communities?
We established that program back when COVID was really first, first emerging on the scene, I guess, and back in June, and working with Marcia, that the, that the, the community social worker office was funded really through other avenues and, and didn't need this kind of formal rental assistance program that was handling assistance to residents in a, in a different manner. Do you want to say more about that, Marcia? No. Other communities have funded their, their programs with the CARES Act funds. No. Other communities have funded their programs with the CARES Act funds, and I think that Concord used CARES Act funds for other purposes as well. So, and then a few communities have used CPA, separate appropriations for CPA.
And then another question is that it looks like we've underspent our budget just modestly, but do you expect that to continue? And I guess, how does that work with our planning division budget?
So I think that at that, I think it was like 11 hours, maybe, or something like that.
Yeah, it's not that significant.
So we call that, we would call that kind of even. So how the accounting works, plus or minus 10 hours is forgiven by all communities. And we try to balance it out, but the work is not even necessarily. So it might go, it might spike up or down, and that's why we look at it quarterly. I don't foresee any overages or big underages. Many communities have already purchased additional hours in this year because of projects that were unplanned, but Concord's not in that situation. Actually, I think last year Concord wasn't in that situation, and we did buy additional hours, but not this year.
And we partner with the Concord Housing Development Corporation when we need to do that. We also help support the Concord Housing Authority without any expectation of additional money from them, but we know that they are instrumental in providing for our affordable housing needs in the community.
Okay. Jane?
Just keying off of Matt's question, which I thought was a really good one, is it that we don't need, have, I would be surprised to discover that we didn't need emergency rental assistance in Concord. So is there another one of the programs that, as, you know, as Marsha just listed, that would be taking care of that? Or is that something that we should be thinking about addressing in the future?
We, there are other resources that our community, our Human Services Department looks at and is able to draw from, rather than creating a rental assistance program. We've not heard, we did a lot of outreach last summer to try to find out if there was a need for that, and there wasn't at the time because there were other resources available to them. So because we did not have a pot of money, either through CPA or through the Concord Housing Development Corporation, available to direct to this, and we didn't want to use CARES Act funds necessarily toward this, because there are a lot of other needs in the community, we felt that we would wait to hear if there was a need and then try to find the resources necessary. And there hasn't been any expressed need at this time. Thanks.
Okay. If not, I think I'm going to move on to the next agenda item because we, well, we've got Marsha and Liz here captive, actually, in between agenda items they're involved with. We'll use their expertise on this. We've brought forward the charge that was originally written, I believe, around, or at least approved in 2018, for the Junction Village Open Space Task Force. And in a couple places, it may need to be updated. And so feel free, once we get some board member input here, Liz and Marsha, to contribute to the discussion.
And I'm going to recuse myself from this item since I'm a near voter.
Okay, some of this is just language in terms of?
Today's?
In terms of deliberation.
Yeah, okay, fine, Matt. So one of the, one of the points that's come up is whether or not the Junction Village title might be amended to include Christopher Heights Junction Village to differentiate it from Junction Park, because there are a number of discussions that come up about Junction Park as well. Do you see any difficulty with that, Liz or Marsha?
None.
None.
Okay. So if we pair them together, just so that people know what we're talking about, yeah, okay, fine. The other thing is that the first paragraph mentions, you know, makes reference to the comprehensive permit that was originally approved in 2017. I believe it's been extended now to 2023, if I'm recalling correctly, or 20, it's been extended. So if we had the correct date, I'm wondering if we could at least reference the extension so that people aren't zeroing in on the expired.
That makes sense, yes. And you could just leave it as amended or as updated?
Yeah. We could. Sometimes the clarity prevents other problems, however, so we'll see. Okay. The other question that came up was, so within the document, the title of the committee will reflect the dual reference to Junction Village and Christopher Heights, that appears a number of times in this. The other question that's come up is, originally we called for a report for the Select Board by September 2019. Well, obviously, that's not going to happen. So I guess I'm asking both of you, what is the duration of the committee's work from where you sit right now? And does it extend beyond just doing the master plan? Because I know a lot of things have changed since this first went in place.
I really haven't had a chance to think that one through, I'm sorry to say. But since this Thursday coming up is going to be the first meeting of the group, and that would give us that opportunity to talk it through. We were hoping to have a master concept by the summer. I think that time has extended somewhat into the early fall, and we might want the group to be available for a period of time after that. So if we had a two-year, do you think that would work?
Yeah. And I think that once the plan is done, you know, that would be if enhancements are needed or questions during the more detailed design or even during construction, I think that having the group as a resource, should things come available, but it would be less active work. But I think that that would be good to have the group available.
Yeah. So the earliest that the construction would, that whole process would begin would be the fall of this year, is that correct? That would be the earliest?
No, because we don't have the money, and we were hoping to seek CPA funding for implementation. So the grant, the application would be going in in September. The funds wouldn't be available until next summer, and then there would be a period of time. So we'd be looking at construction in the summer of 2022 for this project.
Okay, so if it went through the end of '23, hopefully?
Definitely.
Okay. Okay. And then the other item that's come up related to this is membership. And one of the, one of the categories of membership is historical commission member, but I think the committee would probably be better served by two members at large and not necessarily with the historical commission position.
The only reason the historical commission was mentioned is because of the, this site was part of the 1859 muster of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, where militia from across Massachusetts came to Concord. And the site between the Estebet River and Warner's Pond was where they all located. I think that information is available. I have that information available, and so that I don't think we specifically need a member of the historical commission on this task force, and that two at-large members would be valuable. We would definitely seek input, though, from the historical commission.
Okay, that makes sense. So sort of walked us through this. Committee members, do you have other questions or comments you would like to make? And do these changes make sense to you? Jane, Susan, Terry?
I agree with the changes you proposed. They sound reasonable to me.
Okay. Jane?
And I don't want to open up a can of worms. I know that Christopher Heights was the developer's chosen name. It seems like a, you know, I just want to note that we're changing a name that Concord's paying for. So I don't necessarily have an objection, it's just it wasn't chosen by Concord. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah. And Linda, if I could just, on that, all of the TIF and all of the other agreements all now say Christopher Heights. So it's the, that was, I think, the interest in making sure there's continuity with the nomenclature.
So Jane, your comments notwithstanding, can you live with the pairing the two together?
It's fine. I just, you know, again, that's, I always want to just highlight when we make decisions that weren't, you know, that weren't discussed. It's not necessarily a one that would be objectionable. It's just.
Yeah, okay, good. The comments that came to me were separate and apart from the town's position on this, in terms of confusion in discussions about Junction Park versus Junction Village. And so that's, that's where I was coming from on it. Okay. Terry, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make?
Yes, I agree with all of your proposed, Jane. And I don't know how to address this issue. I guess I want to see, if possible, something in the charge. It's like a proactive approach. I'm thinking about Junction Park and, well, the reformatory branch and some of these other issues that have come up, where you have all these different stakeholders who are wanting different things. And I don't know how to address this, but I want to make sure that we have a way to address all these different constituencies, because the location of this will be near the rail trail. And again, we're going to have pedestrians versus bicyclists versus disabled people, et cetera, et cetera. And we don't want to get, we don't want to make the mistake that we made in the past. So how do we address that?
Okay, so I'm going to relate what you've just raised, try to, Terry, to the charge that we're talking about right now for the Junction Village Open Space. I think Liz and Marsha, what, if I understand Terry correctly, and I also, we've had comments from others in the community, that in the consideration of how Junction, the open space at Junction Village will be thought about and planned, that the impact of the users of that space don't, the consideration of the, is also given to the impact that will be had on adjacent spaces like Junction Park, the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, activities in the town center, et cetera.
That's almost, that's almost a correct translation. I guess what I'm saying is, when I look at Junction Park, if we had it to do over now, the charge for that might be a little different. So how can we look at this charge for this Christopher Heights Junction Village to make sure that all the constituencies who are going to use it can somehow be satisfied?
So some of that will happen, I think, with the representation that's on the committee, representing different groups. Some of that, I'm sure, will happen with the public forums and public discussions that the committee will hold. Marsha and Liz, do you have comments?
Linda, I was going to say, you know, this is a site-specific, project-specific committee. And while I think it, the charge makes it clear, it can't just look at the limits of its, of its project boundary as the limits of its work, meaning it has to take into consider outside things, I want to caution against lumping together a bunch of things that seem related but are in very different sites. Junction Park has its, is, has its own unique set of issues, and, you know, discussions are underway on how to address that site with that set of issues. Same thing with the reformatory branch. It's got its own set of unique issues that are, in some ways, completely different than the other sites. And so I don't want to lump it all together, because I think all three would then suffer.
No, I agree. I don't think I'm explaining it right. I'm saying, what are the unique issues at this site that need to go in the charge so that we address all the constituencies?
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't one easy solution be to put somebody from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail on the, in membership? Because it seems like all the other pieces are represented.
That's one way to do it.
But I'm not advocating for the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail per se. I'm just simply saying, in a charge, that's one way to handle it. It doesn't, it doesn't mean it's the right way, and it doesn't mean that it will achieve any of the concerns you've just articulated, Terry.
If I may interject, there was a 2016 report after, there were several discussions about the open space specifically. And I think the intention was not to have bicycles on this pathway, that because it was to be in conjunction with Junction Village, it was intended to be a pedestrian-oriented path that would be low-impact and not impact, not be a destination for cyclists. So I think that we would use that report, that open space study that was done initially, as our starting point. And then if there was a desire to go further, we would hear about that during the, during the public meetings that we're hoping to have. So.
I agree. And, but then I saw bike racks in this charge, and I started to get very confused when I saw that.
Because the access could be over the Bruce, will be over the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. We want people to leave their bikes next to the trail, next to the Bruce Freeman, and then access the site. So that was the reason that bike racks were mentioned.
Okay, Terry?
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying, I think that, I know it's late, and I don't know how to solve this, but I think it's a little bit ambiguous the way it's worded right now. And.
All right, so.
Think of a solution, sorry.
All right. I think what I'm going to do is take all of the suggestions that have been given, rewrite this, and I'll bring it back next week, okay? And Terry, in the meantime, take another look at it. If there's something there that specifically could be added before Wednesday, that would be helpful. If I had it before Wednesday, that would be helpful.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on this? Thank you very much, everyone. Matt, you may rejoin us, please. And we're going to move on to the next. Thank you. We're going to move on to the next item, which is the review of the Junction Village Christopher Heights. Whoops, sorry. Discussion of Emerson Annex Unit Number Five. And Liz, I think this is in your court, and Marsha, as needed. You're on mute, Liz.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yep. Hi, Liz Russ, Director of the Regional Housing Services Office. I provided a memo in your packet, and I'll just highlight and walk through part of it. This is about Emerson Annex and Unit Number Five that has come up for resale. Emerson Annex is on 58 Stowe Street, just adjacent to the Emerson Umbrella Art Center. It was an old school that was converted to eight units of affordable housing in 1988. And it's, it's a great place for people to live. You know, it's very close to the town center and, and, yeah. So it was an older form of the deed restriction in the property, and so because of 1988, and many improvements have been made throughout the years. But back in 1988, there was a, you know, they were doing the best at the time, but there were some inherent issues with the form of deed rider. First, the deed riders, in general, expire. That's not the case for this particular, you know, in Unit Number Five that we're talking about is up for resale, but this is more background for you as the board. So the affordable housing restrictions expire over 40 years. But second, the value, the method for calculating the resale value, and this is particular of interest for this particular unit, uses a pretentious, a percentage discount from. for this particular unit, uses a pretentious, a percentage discount from market value. So you take the market value appraisal and you get this, this percentage discount, which is assigned for each unit and is inserted into the deed restriction. And that's how the resale price is determined. In the past, a number of units have come up for resale, and the memo describes the, the different units and the CPA and town funds that have been used to continue and preserve the affordability of the units. When that calculation that I mentioned is done, often the price is too high for the affordable eligible purchaser. So additional funds are needed to keep the unit affordable. So the, so wait, keep that, so the Unit Five resale, so this was owned by a woman, and she died in November. And then the, has, has done the, the, has done the, the proper notices and appraisals and have submitted those. And so now we're able to look at the numbers and to see what it would take for the town to preserve the affordability of the unit. DHCD is the state agency, and they're willing to contribute some amount of funds as well as the town. So I provided a little table there. So the appraisal came in at $600,000. It has a 59.80% discount rate, providing a maximum resale price of $358,800. The eligible purchase price there is $249, and so it basically needs $110,000 of subsidy, of which DHCD would put in some, and Concord might put in additional funds. So the, their timing is now, there's a 90-day marketing period for, for this, these units. And that clock, DHCD is waiting for this decision of the board before starting that clock. The seller is very keen on going forward and selling the unit. The seller is, you know, the estate of the deceased person. The unit is relatively small and needs some, what I call, polishing to make it, you know, sort of show-ready. You know, it's, it's always difficult with the Affordable Housing Program of, because sometimes there's not enough incentive for sellers to, to do that kind of polishing at resale because it's not going to translate into additional funds for them. So, and it's key with this particular deed rider to, to, to find a buyer within the 90-day period. You know, it only takes one buyer, but you just don't know whether, you know, there's going to be that person out there who's going to qualify and want to purchase the unit. So something that Concord could consider is putting in a little extra money to, to help do that polishing just to make sure that there's, you know, more attractiveness for, for a buyer. So, so I think that, is that, is that enough of a summary to start?
It is.
Yep.
Questions from the board?
Right.
So Liz, I'll start. Can you just, who determines the discount rate?
That was determined on, in the initial unit sale. So this would be the initial appraisal done back in 1988 versus the affordable price. And so that that's in the deed rider.
And so obviously, you think that same discount rate still makes sense?
There's no opportunity to comment on, you know, it's just in the deed rider now, and it's just there.
So you have to, you have to work with that.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And then the eligible purchase price, just so everyone understands, that includes, that takes into account the additional condo fee and the impact that would have on the buyer?
Yes, yes, it takes into account the tax rate, the, the condo fee, the interest rate to calculate the loan and using the income limits. It's a standard calculation to ensure that, you know, it's a, that it's affordable to someone earning the income limit and not spending more than 30% on housing.
Thank you.
It's the standard DHCD calculator.
Right. Okay, I just wanted that to.
Yes, thank you.
We have to revisit it every time because we don't remember it like you do.
Sorry. And there's always so much information you can put in the memo and trying to find the right balance.
You do a great job. Okay, any other comments or questions from select board members? Jane?
So this is one of the units that we have always counted as, as part of our affordable housing inventory.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, okay. And do you have an estimate on the, the, let's just call it renovations that might need to be done to prepare the unit?
Well, no, I have not gotten estimates. I thought, what did I say here? Did I give some?
You said, yeah, up to 100, yeah.
Yeah, so I think I said, right, like up to 100 total with, so that you would have 85 for your purchase subsidy and 15 for the renovations.
Okay.
And, you know, right. So it's very, it's kind of cosmetic, and that would be an upside. There is some, she, she mentioned that some of the outlets weren't working, so that, that's really the only question. Otherwise, it's just painting and floor refinishing.
Okay. So given the tight 90-day window to, to sell this unit, will there be additional efforts in terms of trying to market it?
No, if the, if the board goes forward and votes tonight, you know, there, there's funds available, and we would then work with DHCD. They would send out their letter, and we would start marketing right away.
So one other question I had was, this would be marketed as a Concord preference or?
No.
No.
No, no, resales, you know, Concord preference is really only when you have at least 70% units rounded down. So for one unit, when you round down 70%, you round to zero.
Okay.
I just, so you really need two units to get one local preference. So usually on the resale, it's not a local preference.
That doesn't mean someone locally.
Oh, of course, right.
No, I understand that. I wanted to, all I wanted to do is make sure that we were discussing it.
And we, we do a significant amount of local outreach so that, to get the word out to everyone in Concord.
Okay.
I have a quick question. In the past, when these type of units have come up, has there ever been an occasion when the select board not to subsidize the purchase and let it just go to the market and lose it as an affordable unit in Concord?
Maybe Marcia can talk about that, but that, in fact, I don't know if it was a definitive stance, but Unit 11 did, was lost its affordable housing restrictions and went to market.
And that was because we did not have any money set aside or any resources available to, to either purchase it or to help buy it down. So that, that was the only one. The other two, we have been able to intervene and do the repairs, do the renovations, and to resell.
I'll note that there are three units still left in, with this older deed rider after this one. And it's one of the reasons that, or one of the pieces that's included in the CHDC CPC article, you know, is preserving the affordable housing restrictions. So that, this is what we mean by that.
Yeah, I mean, all of these are illustrations of why having some appropriation available to act on so we don't lose opportunities, the rare opportunities that we have. Okay, Matt?
I was just looking at an appraisal for an 800-square-foot condo that's not in, you know, not been very much updated, going for $600,000. It's, I guess I should look up the appraiser next time I want to refinance my mortgage. But is there any process for, I mean, is there more than one appraisal? We just do one appraisal?
The appraisal is done by.
I know in Concord today, the market is so high, but it still seems very lofty as an appraisal.
As I mentioned in the memo, so the seller does the appraisal, so the town is not involved with that. And there is no process to, to challenge appraisals or to do another one.
You mean, just whatever they come up with? That's, that's it?
There's no process as articulated in the deed rider. I think if the select board wanted to challenge the appraisal, we could certainly take that to DHCD and, and go through something there. But the deed rider does not offer a process on that.
Okay, and, and it, it sells for full market value if it goes to market? I mean, that owner gets full market value, or do they get the 59% of full market?
They, their price is capped at the maximum resale price, which is $358,800.
I mean, would the other way be that Concord could be a bidder on the open market? If we didn't believe in the appraisal? I'm just trying to understand.
Concord could buy it for the $358,800, for the seller. Concord could certainly.
Okay, but we, we couldn't just let it ride and let it go to market and potentially buy? Okay, I'm just trying to understand. If we didn't believe the appraisal, that's, that's all. I mean, I do think that the bottom line of what the buy-down costs, it's, it's not, you know, it's worth doing.
Yep. Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Susan, sorry, go ahead.
So if it stays affordable, isn't the appraisal kind of a moot point since what we're really looking at is $249,200? Because that's what eligible.
Well, but it's the gap, the appraisal created the amount of the gap.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, but it, but the, the 59.8% drops it to the $358,800. And then, but the real, the real number is a $249,200 that, that would be, it could be purchased for.
Yeah, it's just that if the appraisal was 50K less, we'd have to spend 30K less.
Well, no, I, I'm saying that the gap between the $358,800 and the $249,200 would be less. The $358 would be lower, but the $249,200 wouldn't necessarily change.
It would be the same, just the gap.
That's exactly right, Susan. That's exactly right. Yep, yep. I mean, partly it's the, the 90-day window is, is really like a, like creates some urgency in the process. Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to entertain a motion to award the, I guess, the $100,000, which would include the purchase price for this unit, the Emerson Annex Unit Five, for $85,000, and up to $15,000 for renovations. Do I hear a second?
And where's the money coming from?
From the affordable housing appropriation.
Okay, thanks. Then I'll second.
Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares. Thank you for walking us through all of that, and good luck with this process.
Thank you. And we'll just keep Stephen informed to see how the, the purchase, the marketing goes to make sure that a buyer is, is.
And people can look for it on the town website as soon as you're, have it ready. Okay, great.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the town meeting preparation working group is the next item on the agenda. And I see Carmen is here. Is she still here?
She is.
I am.
Carmen, first, let me give my apologies to you because I thought this item was on March 1st, which is the last communication I had with you. But here it is, here it is on today's agenda. So thank you for being here.
Sure. Well, thank you for putting this on, Linda. I was just going to suggest to the select board that you might consider putting together a working group to have kind of a comprehensive review of how we do the calendar for town elections and the town meeting, including everything we do, hearings and opening and closing the warrant, getting things to the printer and out to the public and so on. Just to review it and see whether we've got it put together in a way that serves the town as well as it can and is as workable for both staff and people putting things in the warrant and the public. I, I know that our experience of this year and last year can in no way be a benchmark because it's just been so difficult. But there are definitely a few things that came to light. For example, the Finance Committee will this year have an item on the warrant to tie the distribution of the Finance Committee report to when a town meeting is scheduled for rather than making it a fixed date. So there are just a few things like that. And it's been a long time since we've really, this has been a kind of an organic development. It's gone well for lots of years. But it just seems like it might be a good idea to put together a working group to review it, think about it, think about whether we want our town meeting to continue to be in April. Would we prefer it to be in May or June? What would that mean in terms of other calendars? And so on. And honestly, the end result might be, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And we like it the way it's been, and we don't want to change anything. But nonetheless, it seems like it's, it's worth putting together a group to review it. I'd be pleased to be part of that. But this calendar is really the select board's calendar. And so it's, it's really your consideration, how you would like this schedule to be put together.
Okay, and I, clearly you're suggesting that perhaps we look at this sooner rather than later in terms of any implications there may be for next year?
Well, I don't think there are any implications for our currently scheduled town meeting. There, there could be for the, for Town Meeting 2022. And it is certainly the case that the select board is typically called upon pretty promptly after the conclusion of annual town meeting to figure out what the calendar is going to be for the next round. And there's barely a chance to take, to catch a breath for the budgeting units to get started on their budgets, for the Community Preservation Committee to get started on their grant submission process, and a whole bunch of other things that are tied to that calendar. So I think if you wanted to have a review of the whole schedule done in time to implement it for 2022, if there were any changes, you would want to do it sooner rather than later. But there's not a real urgency, so it would be fine to do it later with the understanding that you're probably going to have all the review information ready for the 2023 calendar rather than 2022.
Okay, well, thank you for bringing this forward. There's no lack of activity that we need to address here.
No kidding.
And trying to get, get to all of it within a certain timeframe here is a challenge. But we hear your request, take it seriously. Reaction from the other select board members?
I think this sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, as a new select board member, when I look at the charter, the deadlines in the charter related to the town budget and the review process, and try to reconcile that with when our warrant closes and all, it's very difficult to align everything. So I, I do think that it needs a, a kind of tune-up or at least explanation.
So I think in the, when we looked at this year's challenging calendar, or looked at the, changing the dates for this year's calendar, we had an offline working group that. that brought a proposal back to the select board. Does that make sense to, which then gave the public also an opportunity to respond to that proposal that was brought back to the select board? Does that make sense to everyone? I'm thinking about timelines and who might need to be involved in this and a number of things.
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, are you suggesting, is it multiple members of the select board, in which case a subcommittee, or is it one member of the select board with other members of the public or other committees?
Well, it could be an offline meeting with, I was thinking a combination of staff and maybe a select board member and go from there.
Can I ask a question, Linda?
Yes.
I guess, Carmen, is it, is the idea like a, I guess, analogy, is it Governance Study Committee, except instead of governance, it's town meeting, calendar, and process? Is that kind of what the idea behind this is?
I wasn't really thinking about it being quite as involved as the Town Governance Study Committee, which took us many months and produced a very in-depth report. This is really looking at the calendar and assuming that we will change nothing in terms of hearings and, you know, the number of days in advance of town meeting, that things come in mail to people, and when the warrant is delivered, vis-à-vis the, vis-à-vis the hearings and so forth. But I know that, having worked very closely with town staff, there are a bunch of pinch points that are really hard to, just to manage. And there are pinch points in getting things reviewed by town council before we get them to the printers, and so just the question really occurred to me this year is, boy, I wonder if we can do this better, and what would it look like to do it better in terms of when we schedule things? And there are just, there are so many things that come into this schedule, because we've got Department of Revenue issues and Tax Setting Issues, and printing deadlines, and information that the schools get from the state, and when that shows up, and the Community Preservation Act has its own calendar in there, and when money is ready and when things are reported, and I'm not even remembering half of what goes into the calendar. And, you know, one of the issues that we had this year is we moved town meeting, but we didn't move the town elections, and so we end up with that awkward gap that we had this year, where people who are newly elected are not going to actually take office until three months later, and people who will be leaving office are, remain in office until town meeting is over. And I know, again, this is a sort of a sui generis thing that happened because of this year, but it may be that in moving town meeting, we didn't have enough in mind, the considerations for the town elections and how those are tied. So it just kind of requires a comprehensive look. And again, I'm happy to work with town staff on looking at this. I think it needs the town clerk. I think it needs the town manager or his designee. I think it needs somebody from the schools who are, who's privy to what their calendar issues look like. I think it's great to have a member of the select board, but if the select board would like to have me and staff work on it and then bring it to you for discussion later, we could do it that way. And it doesn't need to be a public meeting, but it could be, so that members of the public, you know, we could hold our meetings on Zoom to have conversations, so that members of the public could sign in and give us their two cents on the calendar as we think about it. So I'm not trying to make more work for you guys, but-
Carmen, it sounds like you would keep the substantive content and dates as we know them. You're really looking at aligning them differently, if I understand you correctly.
Yeah, I think all the pieces of our process are the pieces of our process, and nobody wants to change those. It's just a question of ordering.
Yeah. And you did, you didn't mention someone from the Finance Department, but I think they would be key in terms of the pinch points. Yeah, as well. Well, if you're willing to take that task on working with some key town staff, and then bring that back to the select board, let's see how that fits with fellow select board members here.
Yeah, sorry, Susan.
I was just going to say, I'm a little bit worried. I mean, we're still in the middle of a pandemic. Hopefully, it's coming to an end, but I'm a bit worried about the bandwidth of staff, particularly for another project, so that's my main concern.
Yeah, that's a good concern.
Yeah, I was going to actually make a comment about that, if I may, because I do, you know, there's the traditions that I'm learning about, and then there's the kind of administrative, behind-the-scenes stuff, and sometimes those things don't, you know, aren't always in sync or don't line up in a seamless way. And so I think maybe from an administrative standpoint, I think moderator is correct. I think she could be a part of this, the chair of the board, and then town staff could go through those administrative things, and again, over time, I don't think we need to be on a deadline for June, this town meeting. But as we planned for June, I think we could note, geez, this is kind of a pinch point. If we were going to look, if we were going to really propose a change to something, this would be, you know, kind of make a list as we go into this year's town meeting, and then maybe present some findings after town meeting on, here are the things we thought really could develop some flexibility. I mean, I guess the one that, an example that kind of is in my head is the Town Caucus, which, you know, we did a good job of having outside, but that's a, it's a town meeting vote that requires that, and could that town meeting vote possibly be amended to give some flexibility for a circumstance like that? And again, I think Carmen's right, the answer is probably going to be, no, it doesn't need to, but these are the types of, you know, balancing the traditions and the administrative burdens, I think is something that is a worthwhile assignment, but a long-term assignment.
Carmen, you're still with us? Yeah, Carmen?
Yeah, I actually really like Stephen's idea of just adding to, we're going to be doing this anyway for the June town meeting, and as we go through it, if we have on our agenda every step of the way, thinking about what we would do to make this easier, or make it work better, or line up with something else, then if we do it mindfully when we get to the end, we'll have some things to report to you that you can use as you plan the next calendar. That may be enough.
Okay. Well, thanks for raising this topic, because there, you know, there certainly have been concerns that have come up related to the pinch points especially. So, good. All right, let's leave it there then, that we will charge the town manager's office and Finance Department and everyone else who ends up being the, feeling the impact of the calendar, to take their own notes along the way, and then we'll reconvene on this topic.
Okay.
Immediately after town meeting. Does that, does that work?
I think that's great.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Carmen, for bringing this up, and we'll get back to you. All right, I'm going to move on to committee nominations.
Did you want to address the town manager compensation adjustment?
Thank you, yes.
Was it something, was it something I said?
No. Sorry, you know, we're just, we've got a lot here this evening. Yes, at our last select board meeting, as a public recall, we met in executive session to discuss the town manager's compensation adjustment, and we negotiated with him and completed that task. And so we are now ready to bring that to this meeting, so Susan and I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve an FY21 salary compensation adjustment for Stephen Crane, Concord Town Manager, in the amount of 1.25% increase to base salary effective July 1, 2020, as defined in the contract executed June 3, 2019. Further, authorize the select board chair to review and approve the buyback of up to one week of vacation, should he accrue more than 25 vacation days as a result of the demands of pandemic response.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And Ms. Bates?
Aye.
That's unanimous in the chair, so declares, and we thank the town manager for his service for this last year. Look forward to working with him for the remainder of this year. All right, I'm going to move on to committee nominations.
Nominations are Carleen Hempel of 50 Highland Street to the Junction Village Christopher Heights Open Space Task Force for a term to expire June 30, 2021. Peter Fischelis of 35 Longfellow Road to the Middle School Building Committee for a term to expire at the completion of the project.
Okay, and there are no committee appointments tonight. I'm going to ask, unless someone has something actually time-sensitive, that we postpone the committee liaison reports to next meeting, because some of us will try to attend the meeting at Acton.
The only time-sensitive thing I have is to invite people to attend the Middle School Building Committee Forum on Wednesday evening, the 24th, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Matt.
And if I could just offer, this is not time-sensitive, but it is always good to insert good news, and while at the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee two weeks ago, it was shared that there would be, that they could expect an anonymous $150,000 gift, and that met with some significance, so.
Okay. All right, and so I'll open it up for, the miscellaneous correspondence is included in our packet. I'll open it up for public comment.
I know it's the end of the meeting, I'm not sure how many people are still paying attention after three hours, but the League of Women Voters is on this coming Saturday at 3 o'clock, sponsoring a community forum for Pam Rockwell to speak to us as the chair of the 2229 Main Street effort, and I really hope that citizens will join us. You can go to the League of Women Voters website, Concord Carlisle, League of Women Voters, to sign up for that. It's, if you have any trouble doing that, please contact anyone you know on the League or me, and we will try to help you with that endeavor. This is a wonderful time before they present their final program or final presentation on March 1st, a wonderful time for citizens to become engaged. Thank you for giving me that opportunity.
Thank you, Diane, and if you could just, your full name and address, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry. Diane Proctor, we're so late. 57 Sudbury Road, I was trying to be efficient.
And you were, thank you. Tanya?
Tanya Gales, 62 Prescott Road. When you were discussing the town moderator's suggestion or request that you form a working group, which has been turned into your charging different staff members and the town moderator to discuss things and look back to you, if they meet together, since the select board is charging them to do something for the select board, it may still be a public party subcommittee, and that may need to be checked with the Division of Public Government, because this is not something they're doing on their own, this is something they're doing as requested by the select board, is how I understood it.
So, thank you for your comment, Tanya. Okay. Any other public comment?
Linda, since Diane's here, Diane, can you just announce real quick about the Candidates' Forum?
I'd be happy to, Terry. I'd be happy to, Terry. That is on March 7th, and I don't know the time, Terry, because I don't have that with me right now, I'm sorry.
2 o'clock, 2 o'clock.
Okay, Linda knows. At 2 o'clock on March 7th, and this will be an opportunity for citizens to have an opportunity to hear from the four candidates for the select board. Thank you, Terry. March 7th, that's a Saturday at 2 o'clock, and this coming Saturday, March 27th, February 27th, at 2 o'clock, to participate in the 2229 Main Street discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to remind everybody, the Candidates' Forum will not be just the select board candidates, it will be all the candidates for public office in Concord.
I'm sure I knew that, Jane, I just forgot that little detail. Okay.
Okay, and I'll just add that the preview meeting and the opening of the warrant is on February 27th, Saturday morning at 9 o'clock. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yeah, aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, Ms. Bates, aye.
Okay, we may have just enough time to catch that item on the Acton town meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Right, bye.
Thank you. I will-